Okay, I'm on. We don't have our screens. We're gonna have to do a little different process and be creative tonight because we don't have the screens to look in order to, you know, when somebody wants to talk, they're gonna have to, we're gonna have to kind of figure that out tonight. So, anyway, so we're gonna call our meeting to order. Welcome. Thank you for coming this evening and spending your evening with us, or as long as you can. We're gonna have a roll call by our city clerk, Kathy Valdez.
The records should reflect that all members are present.
If you'll all rise, we're gonna have a pledge of allegiance by council member Green.
All right. Please put your right hand over your heart. Repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Eighteen years ago tomorrow, our lives were changed forever, and I can't believe it's been eighteen years. I just remember it like yesterday, as a result of the terrorist attacks against the United States. So we honor the memories of those who lost their lives and the men and women who responded to the call of duty to protect our way of life. Let us pause for a minute and pay tribute to them. We also acknowledge the living who serve our country. We thank them for the great sacrifices they make for us each day. So if we could just have a moment of silence for them, for those. Okay, thank you. In accordance with the Brown Act, I'd like to announce that as a result of convening simultaneous meetings, the members of the Buenos Sanitation District will receive compensation of $147.75 for the district meeting pursuant to Buenos Sanitation District Ordinance 2006-1. I'd like to remind everyone that the Vista Municipal Code requires the members of the public to observe order and decorum at the meeting and to conduct themselves in a courteous manner. The ordinance was allowed, or adopted, to allow for public input and to facilitate city business without disruption of the meeting. So applause is appropriate for items listed under the presentation portion of the agenda only. Attendees should remain seated during the meeting, and persons needing to stand are requested to step outside the city council chambers where video and audio of the meeting are playing. Hopefully, they're playing tonight. Are they out there? Okay. This is also listed on your agenda cover sheet. And students, do I have students here, Rancho Buena Vista? Yeah, a lot of you tonight. Okay, if you're wishing to receive credit for attending this evening's meeting, you have to stay for a minimum of one hour. However, we ask that you stay for the completion of an item rather than leaving in the middle of a discussion. So when you're ready to leave, you can ask one of the sheriff deputies or staff member in the back of the room to sign your paper. So with that, we're gonna go on to addressing the city council. And to speak for three minutes on an item on the agenda, please fill out a speaker slip with the number of the item you want to speak on and give it to the clerk secretary down here. Speaker slips are available just outside the city council chambers on the table out there. So with that, we'll have approval of our agenda. City manager Patrick Johnson.
Thank you, mayor. There are no changes to the agenda.
And this evening, we have two presentations. The first one is I'd like to invite my city council members to join me at the podium for our first presentation. It's recognition of our 2019 Fourth of July Star Spangled sponsors. And so we're gonna go down there and give them some recognition. Okay. City of Vista would like to acknowledge our generous Fourth of July Star Spangled sponsors for the contribution in making our 2019 Independence Day event a spectacular success. Did any of you go to the Fourth of July thing at Brangle Terrace Park? A few of you, a few of you did. Well, without their support, the Fourth of July celebration would not have been the best fireworks show in San Diego County. But some of you saw the fireworks, though, even if you didn't go to, over there, did you? Some of you? Yes, I see headshot. An estimated of 10,000-plus attended or viewed this year's display. On behalf of the City of Vista, thank you to each of you for being generous community partners. We applaud your commitment to our community, and we certainly appreciate our generous sponsors. So at this time, I'd like to present a certificate of appreciation to each of our $5,000 sponsors. And first, I'll call up Dick Miller. Dick Miller, Inc. He's... Appreciate that. Dr. Browners. Trudy and Michael Browner. Oh, picture. Did we get, did we, Dick? Come on up here. Maybe I'll just stay up here. Okay, we ready? Is Fresh Creative Foods here? Is Fresh Creative Foods are not here? Oh, you are here. Come on down. Oh, okay, we'll do it with everybody at the end. Okay, okay, got it. Tri-City Medical Center, where? Thank you. Now, now we can do the picture.
All right.
Can you do a bit wider? Are we okay? Next thing on our agenda is our Census 2020 presentation. So Robert Garcia, partnership specialist with the United States Census Bureau, is going to provide us with a Census 2020 presentation.
Good afternoon, honorable counsel, mayor. Appreciate the opportunity to be here. Thank you for your time, and I want to just mention that the city manager's office has been really supportive in this effort, especially Ms. Sylvia Daniels. So as I was mentioning, my name is Roberto Garcia. I'm a representative for the U.S. Census Bureau, and today I'll be talking to you about people, money, and power. So why do we do a census? Why does that matter? Well, I can tell you that in our United States Constitution, it indicates that there has to be a head count of everyone living in the United States every 10 years. This includes people of all ages, races, ethnicities, citizens and non-citizens. The first census was conducted in 1790, and one has been conducted every 10 years since then. And why does it matter? Why do we need to know who lives in our community? Well, I can tell you that it's very, very important because it determines how many seats each state has in the House of Representatives. The federal government distributes $675 billion every year. Those are your taxes, my taxes. The state of California receives $115 billion of that allocation. I also want to add that states use this information to redraw congressional and school districts. But it's not just about power. It's not just about money. Really, it's about people. The census is pretty much the portrait of America, but not only that, we use census information for many, many things. Here, you can see on this great screen that census data is used, for example, by the city to see if we need to have more roads, more housing, more schools. Some parts of San Diego are fire-prone, so we need to know who lives in those communities so that we can evacuate them in a safe and secure manner. Businesses also use this information to see if their business is gonna thrive in a specific location. So as you can see here, census data really impacts all of our lives in many, many ways. So 2020 is right around the corner, and we want to inform you as well as the public that April 1st, as of today, has been designated a Census Day. So no joke, April 1st. We would like everyone to take the census questionnaire. We will not only send you one reminder, or two reminders, or even three, we will send you five reminders to make sure that everyone in your household is counted, as well as everyone living in this community. And the 2020 census is gonna be monumental because it'll be the first time that people can take the census questionnaire online. We would like people to take it at the comfort of their home and their computer. They can also do it on their smart device. For those individuals that might not be too technologically savvy, we will make sure to have call centers where they can call in. We will be supporting 13 languages, including English, for both the internet and the phone option. For those individuals that do not self-respond in those two manners, then they'll be receiving the more traditional paper form than most of you might be accustomed to seeing. And if all else fails, if people do not respond, then at that point, we will be sending out an numerator which will go and knock on someone's door and conduct an in-person survey. So as I mentioned, internet first. Everyone is gonna be receiving a letter that will have a link unique to your household. If, for some reason, you misplace that letter, then there'll be a general link that everyone can use to take the census questionnaire. We're working with a few partners, such as the libraries, resource centers, to have some sort of kiosk where people can come in and take the census questionnaire in those locations. We want to make sure that everyone understands that your private information is protected. It is confidential for a period of 72 years. We will never, ever distribute your personable identifiable information to any department of the government, whether it be enforcement like FBI or immigration services like ICE. All the information is protected, and as of today, there hasn't been an instance where the U.S. Census Bureau has been involved in leaking or providing information. We, as census employees, do take a life oath to protect your information, and there are stiff penalties and fines if we do not uphold that oath. So we're here today because we can't do it alone. We've been collaborating with multiple organizations. I want to say now about 150 throughout San Diego County, specifically in the City of Vista, there are a few, such as the Chamber. We've also been working with the Latino Research Center, Universidad Popular, a few YMCA centers. And in regards to that, we are also hiring. We will be opening three offices in San Diego County. We're looking for about 10,000 people to make sure that we get this count right. Here, you can see a few examples of some of the jobs and how much they pay. We think that's pretty fair for San Diego. The requirements are you have to be over the age of 18, you have to be a U.S. citizen or a resident, and you have to have a valid email address. People do not need a resume. They do not need reference contacts. It's just a personality test that they can take, and then we will give them a call if they're qualified. So I hope that you can share this research with your networks. So a little bit of where we are. So our offices are pretty much fairly open now. We have people working in them, and we will continue to hire until April 1st of 2020. So there is opportunity for people to hire. And I wanted to show you this timeline because, at this point, we're really focused on our educational phase. We want to bring the message of the census to as many people as we can. And I also want to show you the timeline because we always get asked, "How do you count the homeless population?" Well, I can tell you that the homeless population is counted at the beginning of the year, from January through March. We group them as part of a counting operation that we call group quarters. At that point, not only do we count homeless individuals, we also count service members that might be living at a post. We count university students that might be living at a university, people that might be in shelters, people that might live in hospitals or hospices. So I wanted to show you that. And then lastly, the last day for everyone to take the census questionnaire will be July 31st. So just those two dates, April 1st is Census Day, and July 31st will be the last day that people can take the census. Just a few highlights. So pretty much every city is now on board to support the census. We have liaisons at each city, and the purpose of me being here today is we want to make sure that we continue to work together and collaborate. So if there are opportunities individually from you council members, you know, more than welcome to work with you, see if we can, you know, talk to other entities, organizations, educational institutions, to bring the message of the census. So what we do is we do education. We want to make sure that everyone understands that it's safe, it's secure, and that the census is so important because, aside from voting, it's the next thing that we can do to bring resources to our communities. So here are just a few examples. If you invite us to events, we will be there. If you invite us for a speaking opportunity, we'll be there. If you want to get activated, let us know of places where we should be in your city. Please let us know. We're more than happy to work together. And here, just as you can see, a quick example. It's been a year that we've been doing this work, and as of today, we completed about 500 events and activities and presentations such as these. So we will continue to spread the message. We will continue to work with nonprofit organizations and other partners to make sure that we're bringing the message of the census to as many people as we can. So last steps, or sorry, not last steps, but the next steps. Ideally, we would like all of you to be spokespersons, right, to make sure that our community is ready to take the 2020 census. If you can invite us to any meetings that are recurring, things that are happening where you think this presentation makes sense, please let us know. And then lastly, if you know anyone that's looking for a job opportunity, please make sure to refer them to us. So I'm gonna quickly go through the following slides. So here, you can see just a quick representation of the results of the 2010 census. So here, you can see that the states in blue gained congressional seats, and the seats, and sorry, and the states highlighted in green lost congressional seats. So as you can see here, in 2010, it was the first time that California did not gain or lose any congressional seats. I did mention that the state of California receives $115 billion every year. Here, you can see a few of the programs and their allocations. As you can see, Medicaid, Medicare are some of the top recipients. There's also funding for students through the federal direct student loan. And even at the local level, the lunch programs at the elementary school districts and other districts do come from federal funding. And what does this mean for you guys? What does it mean for Vista? Well, in 2010, we were able to count 94,000 people in this community. The San Diego Association of Government, Sandag, is forecasting that by 2020, this population in Vista will be 100,000 individuals. And obviously, everyone is using roads, you know, people are using schools. And in order for this community to continue to grow, to thrive, and to provide better opportunities for its residents, we have to have everyone counted. Because otherwise, we can lose up to $2,000 per person, per year, for the next 10 years. And we have a large task. Only about 70% of the population actively participated in Vista. So that means we had to go out and look out for almost 30,000 people living here in your community. And the reason is because there are hard account census tracts where the participation rate is lower than 70%. So I'll leave you with that, just a few numbers here. But I want to mention that, you know, we are very happy to be working with staff members here at the city, and we hope that we can get your support as well. So with that said, thank you for your time. I hope that we can count on you to make everyone count, and I'll take any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Do I, do I have, do you have questions? Oh, Councilman Rigby.
Thank you. Oh, thank you, Kathy. I was at the Census 2020 workshop down in San Diego last month for all of the different organizations in our communities that are working together with the Census Bureau to do the census, where they're talking about how their individual organizations were gonna be throughout our community. And listening to the plan of action, I guess you'd call it, was very impressive because it was, it was very interesting to hear in great detail the hard-to-count demographics, the homeless, et cetera, and how you were going to get engaged with that for a more accurate count this year than we probably have had in a long time. So I really appreciated the opportunity to go down and be part of that workshop. You're doing a great job, and I appreciate you coming here and talking to our community about it as well. So thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? I don't see, we don't have any things to put, punch, so I'm looking to see if anybody's made.
I'll just add a very quick comment. I printed out some census statistics that I planned to use in our discussion this evening. So as decision-makers in our community, the work that you're doing is important to us for many years to come. This is extrapolation of data from the 2010 census. We look forward to the new data.
Awesome. And, you know, with your support, we'll make sure to have 100% participation, hopefully an accurate count as well.
Thank you.
Awesome, great. If you want to contact me or have any further questions, Ms. Sylvia Daniels at city manager's office has my contact, and more than happy to chat or converse. Thank you for your time again.
Thank you for your presentation. It's appreciated. It's good information for us, for all of us. Next is our consent calendar. The recommendations on the following consent calendar will be enacted in one motion unless an item is removed from the calendar. Any member of the public may remove an item by submitting a request to speak card to the clerk secretary. And items removed from the consent calendar will be considered immediately following the adoption of a calendar. We have six consent items this evening. Deputy Mayor Franklin.
I move. We approve the consent agenda as offered by staff.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Motion, oh, we're gonna vote by raising our hands? Okay. Everyone in favor of that, of the motion? I guess you did that. Anyone, okay. No, I had, they all raised their hands, so that motion passes unanimously. Hmm. Okay. The next is our public hearing. Our first public hearing, there's one public hearing this evening. This is a public hearing to receive testimony regarding a sewer easement vacation at 1755 Hacienda Drive. So I'm going to see, let's see. Public hearing's now open. Community Development and Engineering Director John Conley is going to provide our staff report.
Thank you, mayor and council. Sarah Bottom, our right-of-way agent that worked on this project, will be presenting.
Good evening, mayor and council members. For your consideration this evening, staff presents a resolution to vacate a public sewer easement at 1755 Hacienda Drive. This easement was originally granted to the city, by the city, in 1985. The public sewer main has been subsequently relocated on the property, and the main within the easement has been abandoned since 1989. No other utility companies or public utility agencies object to the vacation of this easement. And this concludes the staff presentation. Staff is available for any answers, or to answer any questions you may have.
Deputy Mayor.
Are there no speakers, Madam Mayor?
Pardon?
Are there no speakers from the public?
There's no speakers from the public.
Well, a little bit of context to this. This is gonna allow Costco to realign their pumps. I don't personally fuel my car at Costco, but I can tell you by the vast numbers of people waiting in line to do so that, obviously, there's a great demand for the fuel provided at Costco, and this is going to help increase the number of cars that can get through and maybe make it a little easier to get through the parking lot. So for that reason, seeing no cause for objection, I would make a motion that we close the public hearing and adopt the sewer vacation.
Councilmember Rigby.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. For the same reasons, I agree with Deputy Mayor Franklin, and I will second that motion. We really are looking forward to the realignment of the gas pumps. The gas, uh, traffic tends to really back up on Hacienda where they're located right now. So I think this will be a good thing for the community. So thank you.
Anybody else want to speak? See, none. I'll ask for, I have a motion and a second, so please vote. Your hands, say aye, okay. And that motion passes unanimously. This is interesting tonight to do this. Okay. So next, we're gonna go to our discussion item. We have four discussion items this evening. The first one is the state of California mandatory trash cleanup order and garbage collection and disposal ordinance amendment. So our principal engineer, Elmer Alex, will introduce this item.
Thank you, mayor, and members of the city council. Elmer Alex here, Sewer Engineering Division Manager. Next to me is John Nodich, our Stormwater Program Manager. And Mr. Nodich, I'll be presenting this item tonight regarding the new statewide mandate to clean up trash in the environment. Very briefly, a presentation outline that we're gonna be giving to you tonight is, Mr. Nodich will first cover the background and compliance strategy for the city to comply with these mandates. Then I will go into the financial plan, proposed service charge to the EDCO trash bill, and ordinance amendments to the Vista Municipal Code. I'll hand it over to Mr. Nodich.
Thank you, Elmer. Good evening, mayor and members of the Vista City Council. I'm John Nodich, the Stormwater Program Manager. In June of 2017, the San Diego Regional Water Quality Control Board issued a set of regulations referred to as the Trash Order. The Trash Order presents enforceable regulations that support a statewide mandate issued in 2015 requiring the installation of trash capture devices within the storm drain system to collect and control trash, preventing it from entering local waterways. The order specifies that trash capture devices must be installed in five land uses most likely to experience litter. Those land uses include commercial, industrial, mixed-use, high-density residential, transportation stations, and bus stops. The order also identifies a 10-year compliance timeline such that all trash capture device installations must be completed by the end of the year 2030. One of the first requirements of the Trash Order was for agencies to prepare a Trash Order implementation plan describing activities that will occur over the 10-year period to achieve compliance. In early 2018, a request for proposals process was initiated to identify a project team most qualified to develop the City of Vista's implementation plan. HDR Engineering was selected through this process, and at the May 8, 2018 Vista City Council meeting, an agreement was approved to have HDR Engineering complete this work. Due to the importance of having an implementation plan that is both regulatory compliant and financially sustainable, during its preparation, HDR Engineering also prepared a 10-year financial plan. Both plans will be discussed in this presentation. The City of Vista's Trash Order Implementation Plan was submitted to the San Diego Regional Water Quality Control Board on November 30, 2018. One of the most important components of this plan was to calculate the amount of trash expected to be generated annually by each of the five land uses identified in the order. In 2016, agencies throughout San Diego County participated in a regional study to evaluate land use trash generation rates. Through this study, trash capture devices were installed at 35 sites, maintained for one year, and assessed for the amount of trash they captured from the surrounding land uses. By knowing the average amount of trash collected for each land use, these rates were then multiplied by the number of acres of each land use within the city. The calculated total then became the annual volume of trash to be controlled and collected before the end of the 10-year timeline. After calculating this annual volume, the city was then able to take credit for trash reduction activities already being implemented. Examples of these activities include the city's street sweeping program, maintenance of existing trash capture devices, such as those that were installed with the regional study, and for having street-side trash containers placed in high-used pedestrian areas throughout the city. These activities enabled the city to apply a conservative credit of 57% toward the annual volume of trash to be controlled and collected. To fulfill the remaining 43% of trash reduction necessary, the Trash Order mandates for the installation of trash capture devices within the storm drain system as a last line of defense. The next few slides illustrate how these devices function and are maintained. There are many different types of trash capture devices, but most are variants of the two examples I will describe for you here. The first is referred to as a pipe screen. In this photograph, we're looking at a storm drain inlet which collects runoff from the street during rain events. In the next slide, we will be looking at a pipe screen by the opening and looking through this manhole, sorry, excuse me, through the opening of this manhole. We are now looking inside of the inlet structure through the open manhole. For reference, the inlet from the street where runoff enters the structure is in the top-right portion of the photo. Located at the bottom of the structure is a pipe that connects to the downstream storm drain system, and installed of that, installed in front of that pipe is a pipe screen. As runoff enters the inlet structure from the street, the pipe screen filters out debris and retains it within the structure, allowing water to continue into the downstream storm drain system. Now, you likely noticed that the pipe screen has a very fine mesh. The Trash Order requires pipe screens to have a mesh size of 5 millimeters, which is significant but necessary because that's what collects one of the most commonly frequently encountered items of litter, cigarette butts. A second common type of device is referred to as a treatment manhole. This device is installed directly in line with the pipe storm drain system. The device operates by allowing dirty water to enter on one side of the manhole, illus- The device operates by allowing dirty water to enter on one side of the manhole illustrated on the left side of your screen. As water enters, a swirling motion is created, forcing heavy debris to settle at the bottom and floatable material to rise to the top. Treated water is then allowed to exit the device and continue into the pipe storm drain system to the right-hand side of your screen. Procedures for maintaining both pipe screens and treatment manholes are very similar. As illustrated on the left, a Public Works crew can maintain the devices by use of a large vac truck. After opening the manhole lid, the truck's vacuum hose is placed inside of the structure. Trash and debris collected by the device is vacuumed out, and if necessary, a crew member can also use a water jet sprayer to dislodge debris as illustrated in the right-hand photo. The installation of both types of devices will be necessary to achieve compliance with the Trash Order. To ensure a strategic approach toward device installations, implementation activities will build gradually over time. The city's drainage master plan has not been updated since 2009, and clearly significant development has occurred in the city since then. As a result, early years of implementation will focus on completing drainage studies to supplement the master plan. These studies will assess site conditions and flow volumes to optimize trash capture device installations. While completing these studies, programmatic activities will also be reviewed to identify additional opportunities to prevent littering and manage trash. Toward the end of this period, results from the drainage studies will be used to begin limited installation of trash capture devices. The targeted installation of these devices will provide useful information to guide installations in future years. And each year during the 10-year timeline of compliance, they will conclude with submission of an annual report to the San Diego Regional Water Quality Control Board. As implementation activities proceed, in year six, the compliance strategy shifts toward a focus on the installation and maintenance of new trash capture devices. The installation of approximately 500 trash capture devices will be necessary to achieve compliance with the Trash Order. It will take a focused effort during years six through nine to ensure that installations occur strategically but timely to demonstrate progress toward compliance. As device installations, monitoring, and annual reporting continue, in year eight, a detailed evaluation will be conducted to assess if activities are on track to achieve compliance or of course corrections are necessary. Assuming results of the year eight evaluation are favorable, by year nine, activities in the implementation plan are anticipated to be at or very near demonstrating full compliance. Compliance activities will conclude with preparation of a final report to be submitted to the San Diego Regional Water Quality Control Board in 2030. However, inspection and maintenance of the installed trash capture devices will continue in perpetuity. I would now like to introduce Elmer Alex, who will provide details on the financial plan that supports these compliance activities.
Thank you, John. So a lot of things we look when developing a financial plan, we look at revenues, financial policies, and our expenses. Want to make sure we account for all of our expenses that we can as far as operating and maintenance, including the large capital expenditures that we're planning for in a compliance horizon of 10 years. So staff worked with HDR to develop a 10-year expense schedule, and you show it here on these blue charts over the next 10 years. We put together conservative estimates. The next thing I'll be showing you here, here is the anticipated revenue needed to cover those expenses, and the next portion here is the end fund balance at each year. It's important to have this type of end fund balance every year to save for large capital improvement projects that John was talking about, the large, the trash capture devices. Having these end fund balances levels out the revenue needed in the later years from '24, '25, and later, and this avoids large increases to revenues. We, he also talked about the long-term maintenance that we will have to be maintaining these devices longer than the 10 years, but the current planning horizon for now is 10 years. So the revenue needed to comply with this is approximately $20 million over the next 10 years. Not complying with the Trash Order could lead to fines that will exceed these expenses and revenues. So when looking at the revenue requirements, we try to find an equitable way to distribute these revenue requirements evenly. So we looked at the EDCO billing structure, and EDCO bills based on the size of the trash container, the number of trash containers, and the frequency of pickups per week. So we took that total volume of revenue, took that revenue and divided by the total volume, and we found an equitable rate of approximately 3/10ths of a cent per gallon per week. What we notice in EDCO's billing is, the city has 91% of our EDCO's accounts are single-family residential, with the majority having a 95-gallon container. The remaining 9% is mostly commercial, industrial, multifamily, and institutional. However, by volume, 65% of the trash volume is commercial, industrial, multifamily, and The state mandate is a solid waste collection activity, so therefore staff is recommending a line item on the EDCO bill, where the statement would be, the line item would be State of California mandated trash cleanup charge. This would be solely dedicated to the control, collection, and disposal of solid waste, not placed in the containers that they're supposed for, and for pickup prior to entering service waters. The next slides here show you the proposed single-family residential monthly rates. This is for the first five years. This is based on the number of gray trash carts a single-family resident would have, not the number of blue recycling or green waste carts. These are proposed maximum rates, with the city manager having the authority to lower rates if necessary. This is a new compliance activity. There isn't a lot of background and data on the cost compared to other utilities like water and sewer, so therefore we're just recommending a maximum rate. This shows the residential for the next five years after the first five-year period. Staff is recommending a CPI increases in the last four years. The slide shows the proposed commercial, industrial, multifamily monthly rates. This would be a per container, per pickup, per week rate, so you'd look at, if they have two, three-yard containers, it'd be $7.88 times two, or if they have one, three-yard, but twice a week pickup, it'd be $7.88 times two. These show the rates in the later five years. Again, we're recommending a CPI increases toward the last few compliance years. So what does this mean to the average bill? So EDCO currently bills single-family residents on a bimonthly basis, and the estimated current charge right now for EDCO for one gray cart is $42.36 every two months. The CMTC charge proposed would be $2.48, bringing the total bimonthly bill to approximately Now, the average commercial, industrial, multifamily is actually pretty significant. This is a three-yard bin is the average with four pickups a week. That's the average customer in this category. And the current bill with EDCO is approximately $387. The proposed CMTC charge would be $31.51, bringing the total charge to over $418. Along with this item for you, we're presenting are some code updates to Chapter 13.6 of the Vista Municipal Code. This includes renaming the chapter title to Solid Waste Management to better align with modern terminology rather than garbage and rubbish. It also establishes the CMTC service charge that we're proposing, the Revenue Fund and the Capital Fund, the CMTC being the California mandated trash cleanup. It establishes procedures to collect the service charge, updating definitions and terminology, and also recover delinquent solid waste charges from those residents that aren't paying the EDCO bill. Staff recommends to introduce and adopt an ordinance amending and restating Chapter 13.16 of the Vista Municipal Code and adopt the resolution establishing rates for the CMTC service charges. Staff is available with any questions you may have on this matter.
Thank you. We don't have any speakers. I'm gonna go with Deputy Mayor Franklin.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You know, it's interesting, several months before we were first briefed on this issue, going back, I don't know, I feel like it's six months, seven months, eight months ago, I was visiting with staff about how we could do more to eliminate litter from our streets, which is something I feel that we can do a better job of. I really started paying attention to it, and there's a lot of litter on our streets, which is a shame. It's hard to imagine there's still people throwing garbage into the streets, whether it's cigarette butts or cups, but if you look as you go down our thoroughfares, there is a lot of trash being thrown out the window. So I'd remind everybody not to, not to litter, because it really does have an impact. Also, as we go down into our environmental set-aside areas in Vista, we see enormous amounts of garbage that have been carried in and in some cases washed in. I'm, I'm happy that we're gonna have an opportunity to continue to mitigate trash. You know, I would reiterate, this is, state law has placed this mandate on the City of Vista, so the compliance and the costs associated with it are necessary under state law. I personally would have preferred to have focused on point-of-discharge trash collection, which I think would have been more cost-efficient, but the law that this legislature passed did not allow us to do that, and therefore, in their wisdom, we may wind up spending more money. But I think in the long term, we're all in favor of preventing pollution discharge from our stormwater runoff, despite the necessary cost not being fun. So with that, I also want to say, Mr. Nodich and Mr. Alex, appreciate your good work on this. I know you put a lot of time into this and briefed all of us numerous times and listened to all of our ideas. Some of them were zany and some of them were, weren't, but appreciate you trying to incorporate some of those, and I hope that we're gonna see cleaner streets in Vista because of this. And with that, I would make a motion that we introduce and adopt the council ordinance proposed, and that we adopt the council resolution proposed.
I also have a speaker now, so, and what I'm gonna do is, because we have more than, a few more than 10 speakers tonight, I'm gonna limit them all to two minutes if that's okay with you guys. Okay, so we'll hear a speaker, and then I'll get to Councilmember Contreras. J.C. Winn.
Hello, Mayor and Council. Thanks for letting us have a minute to speak. Listening to the, to the proposal here, I noticed a few things that they left out, that the fact that they're gonna tax the folks who use the trash cans, and no mention of fines for policing the litterers, no mentioning of code compliance to monitor littering, extra compliance. And, and one suggestion I'd like to make is we could just place one guy in downtown Vista to write citations for all the cigarette butts that get thrown right in front of the pub down there anywhere. That's 50 bucks a pop, we can, maybe we can pay, pay for all this. So the taxpayer, the, the people that are actually using the trash cans in their houses and their businesses ain't getting paid, don't have to pay for the guys that are dumping the litter. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Contreras.
I just want to go off of some of the comments that Deputy Mayor Franklin made. Yeah, I definitely want to see a reduction in the amount of trash. You know, I participate, like some of my colleagues, when Only Losers Litter have their monthly trash walk. So inspired by that group that me and a couple people are gonna be getting together every Wednesday at 8:30 a.m. until about 10 a.m. Our headquarters is gonna be Luz Duran Park, and we're gonna be cleaning up the neighborhood on a weekly basis, so really looking forward to that. It's an open invite to anybody, and I want to thank again Only Losers Litter for, for helping us, you know, get to a zero-trash Vista. But one of the questions that I do have, I know that right now we're going through and we're looking in the city for completing sidewalks and whatnot, so for areas where we're gonna build new sidewalks, and there possibly will need to be new inlets, do we have that factored in, or is that gonna come, you know, be part of the equation later on?
Yeah, we do have some flexibility within the financial plan that we've provided that was prepared by HDR Engineering, so that some of those projects would be covered. Now, the one thing to consider is this is based on specific land uses, so it really depends on whether the project is within the type of land use that the Trash Order requires these devices to be installed. The other thing that would be important is, we really want to target areas where we can get the maximum gain where we're gonna install these devices, so we want it to be opportunistic. And so if there's a project area where we're able to treat a larger area and get some additional gains in that trash reduction, that's where this type of funding would be appropriate.
Okay. But any new inlet would need to have a, would it need to have a pipe screen at minimum?
Yes, if it's gonna be in one of those land uses, that's correct.
Okay. Which would be like residential or something?
Hyatt City Residential, yes. But not single-family residential, that's not one of the priority land uses.
Okay. And that's where some of the newer sidewalks are gonna be going in? So in that case, if it's a single-family and there's a new sidewalk and an inlet created, then we would not be putting a pipe screen there? Okay.
No, no, not in that scenario.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Oh, and I second Deputy Mayor's motion.
Councilmember Rigby.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you for that report. As it was already brought up, the State of California has decided to do this because of the incredible trash problem we have, the litter problem we have, not just in Vista but throughout the state. But Vista, we have a serious littering problem, and you might recall a couple of years ago, we have these really fabulous new trash bins that we've put around town. I have actually seen people unwrap their candy bar, finish their chip bag, walk right past a trash bin, and throw it on the ground. That's unacceptable. We're better than that. We have community groups like Only Losers Litter picking up trash. We contract with an organization to come pick up our trash. I know the corner of Hacienda and Vista Village where the vacant lot is with a chain-link fence, that chain-link fence just gets, you know, one, two feet high, full of trash up against it, and we have a group go out there and they clean it up, and it's beautiful, it's pristine, and 24 hours later, you would never know they were there. The trash problem is literally that bad, and because of that, we're gonna be paying over $20 million to mitigate litter in our community. It's, to me, we can do better than that in Vista and in the state. And I, I know that we, when we had our discussions, we talked about after a few years, if we get people to change their behaviors and use the trash bins that are provided throughout the city, or like people are taught and leave no trace, what you track in, you track, you track back out again. You don't just finish it and throw it on the ground. Is there, is there, there's no resolution at the end of this. I know that conversation came up when we were having our meetings about the money that has to go into it and the long-term effect of it. But if we start showing through the vector trucks that we're not collecting as much trash in a few years, is there any relief for us with the state at all through that? Or is just kudos to the city for not throwing as much trash into the gutters?
That's a fantastic question, because the, the order, the way it is written, is it does mandate for the installation of devices within those priority land uses, so that is in the regulation. So it's a difficult one to get passed at, but there are opportunities within the plan that we prepared for the implementation plan to identify those credits for the programmatic activities, and there's monitoring involved as well. So hopefully with time, and as we could demonstrate that type of data to the regional board, I would hope that that would buy us some credit to perhaps not put in as many devices.
Right. Thank you. And then the other question, and I did have this question, and we talked about this in our meetings, and Mr. Winn brought it up. We do have an anti-littering ordinance on the books. We just don't have a lot of enforcement. People, I guess the cops aren't driving by when people are throwing their Snicker trash on the ground. I would like for us as a council to look at our anti-littering ordinance, and to look at an educational campaign through all of the social media and the print matters that we have as a city at our disposal. To talk about littering is a huge problem for us. It's an envi- It's an environmental problem. We don't want this trash washing down into our creeks and then on out into the ocean, hence these new devices that we have to have. So we talk a lot about protecting our environment, but we're not seeing, we're not seeing people walk the walk. We're seeing them, we're hearing them talk it, but we're not seeing them walk it. So if we can do an education outreach through our community, through our Vista, through our Facebook, through our Twitter, through other avenues, I think that would be great to do an education for our community, because I would like nothing better than to drive down Hacienda and Village, or Main Street, or Michigan, and not see trash in the gutter or on the street. That would be an awesome day in Vista. So I would just ask that we look at that and maybe come back with something with some teeth and with some education to it as well. So...
Councilwoman, I just wanted to say that throughout our meetings with the city council, we heard a number of comments like that, and we are looking at doing a code enforcement kind of sweep, if you will, for people that are littering, as well as, we've worked with the school district and had some conversations with them about education to the students, and looked at some other media outlets to be able to get the word out in conjunction with the program that we're talking about tonight.
Excellent. Thank you. I look forward to having those items come back before so we can take a look at how that's going to play out. So thank you very much, and remember, use the trash bins, please.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. Councilwoman Rigby and Mr. Johnson kind of stole my thunder, but I want to just second what you said. I'm one of the ones, and I suggested, one of my zany ideas was, let's have a sting and let's do some highly-publicized enforcement, because it is ridiculous in 2019 that people throw their garbage out of their car windows onto the streets, or throw it down on their way to work or school, wherever they're going. And while clearly it is not economically feasible for us to have an ongoing, you know, sting program, I think a couple of times a year, we ought to make a publicity effort to issue some fines through code enforcement and make a point that we care about it in our city and that we're serious about enforcement, and we're not going to tolerate people throwing garbage on the streets and, you know, fouling up our city. And I appreciate the conversations we've had with the school district. I've talked to the superintendent about this issue, particularly when I've gone out to clean up litter. I've noticed it's a lot of, particularly as I go down Melrose, I notice it's a lot of candy wrappers and it's snack bars, and it looks like, quite frankly, stuff out of school lunches. So I think, you know, I want to speak to all the students in the room, you know, talk to your friends, and if you see somebody throw something on the ground, you know, ask them why they would do that. We all live here. We want a clean community. It hurts the environment. It hurts the neighborhood we live in. So if you see somebody throw something on the ground, stop and pick it up and tell them you're going to put it in the trash, because I guarantee you, they won't throw it on the ground to get in your presence if they see you. Take the time to stop and pick it up. So be one of the good guys and put stuff where it belongs. Keep our community clean.
I also see fast food wrappers, and my pet peeve is when people throw stuff in the back of their truck, the trash in the back of their truck, and then they drive along either in the city or on the freeway, and the trash blows out every time. So it's like, don't throw the trash in the back of the truck. So yes, try, let's try and be better, a better, cleaner city. That would be nice if everybody would take care of their trash. And actually, even on my street, I've had people throw out their fast food trash on the street. I just can't know why people do that. Anyway, okay, so I have a first, I have a motion and a second. So everybody in favor of that?
Aye.
That passes unanimously. Okay. The next thing on our agenda is our Sycamore Creek Detention Basin. Our Community Development Engineering Director, John Conley, is going to provide the staff report on that.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Discussion item regarding the Sycamore Creek Flood Detention Basin, this is also known as Capital Improvement Project Number 8285, was put on the CIP in 2015. On the overhead shows the location of the project. It's located north of the Monarch Development, which is the apartment project that's under construction behind the 99-cent store.
John, I'm conflicted on this, because I live above that, so I'm going to leave. And, oh, the Deputy Mayor left. He's going to take...
No problem.
Huh? I'm going to go, and then somebody can take over.
No problem.
Your turn.
I thought it was the next item. I was going to sneak to the men's room real quick, but I went on the wrong item. Okay. Where are we, Mr. Johnson? Continue with the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. The project site is located north of the Monarch Development, which is the apartment project that's under construction behind the 99-cent store off of East Vista Way. Its address is 751 East Vista Way. You can see the Monarch site is in the orange on the south side of the former Mobile Home Park property, and the area with the red checkmarks is the detention basin site. It's about 2 and 1/2 acres of the 13-acre Mobile Home Park site, and the project is proposed to reduce the 100-year flood zone within the historic downtown area, which is downstream of this location. So the Monarch Development, as I mentioned, is 179 apartments. It was approved by the Planning Commission in 2017. The city retained ownership of a portion of the site in the north portion, as well as the public trail and the creek, which is about a five-acre portion of the parcel. Following approval of the Monarch Development, the city entered into an agreement with the developer to excavate the basin area and use the fill from the basin excavation to provide fill in their site, to bring their site up above the flood plain elevation. This benefited the developer by providing a cheap source of local fill, and it benefited the city by allowing us to have our detention basin whole, for lack of a better word, excavated by the developer. During the excavation activities, significant subsurface cultural resources were discovered on the basin site. This is a picture of the Monarch Development Plan that was approved by the Planning Commission. The red area shows the detention basin, which is on the north side of the project, and the yellow area shows the ownership of the city property that we retained when the Monarch project was approved. So the Monarch property is about eight acres, and the city's property inclusive of the creek, the trail, and the detention basin is about five acres. The developer retained an archaeologist, which contracted with a Native American monitor in accordance with the conditions of approval for the project, and began evaluation of the cultural resources that were discovered within the basin. They coordinated with the local San Luis Ray Band of Mission Indians, which is the most likely descendant, as well as a Native American monitor during the excavation activities. Testing and recovery of the cultural resources took place on the site for about a three-month period at the developer's cost, at which time the developer appealed to the city to release them of the grading obligation and bring fill in from an off-site location to complete their grading plan. The city then accepted responsibility for excavating the remainder of the basin, which has about 40% of the fill to still be removed, as well as deal with the remaining cultural resources and recovery activities that were discovered. This shows a couple pictures of the situation at the basin as it currently stands. On the left is the northerly portion of the basin looking north of the site from the access road. It shows an area that's largely been unexcavated, which still has to be excavated as part of the project, as well as a number of soil piles with the potential for cultural resources that have not been tested. On the right is the detention basin area that has been, for the most part, excavated on the southerly portion of the site, and you can see a large number of boulders that were removed from the area as well with blasting activities. Based on the extent of the soil that remains to be tested and processed for cultural resources, the staff estimates another five to six months of cultural resource recovery activities with an archaeologist and a Native American monitor, and we expect that work to be somewhere in the realm of $500,000. There could also be unknown additional costs incurred, depending on what's uncovered with the remaining 40% of the basin excavation that has to be completed. Staff estimates that this additional excavation, as well as the improvements required to finish the project and the additional cultural resource recovery activities, will exceed the current CIP project budget of $860,000, which is in the current CIP. That includes $200,000 in drainage fees and about $660,000 in general capital monies. The impact of the project is that it would remove about 42 properties from the historic downtown area that are within the 100-year flood zone. 12 of those parcels are publicly owned, and the remaining 30 are owned by 22 different property owners. This shows a picture of the flood zones as they progress through the city. You can see in the upper right-hand corner is where the detention basin is proposed to be located. The flood zone extends southwesterly of that into the downtown area, and the square around the downtown area is where the primary project benefit occurs. This is a map showing the 42 properties that are affected, which was also included in the staff report, as well as identified property owners for those 42 properties. The areas in blue and the blue and red crosshesh are the flood zone areas that are prone to the 100-year flood that require elevation of a building's surface when there's new development, and so that was the target for this CIP project. So based on that, there's no additional funding program for the project, and we don't have enough funding source to allocate additional funding to complete the project. Based on the improvements that are needed to complete the project and the benefit that it would provide to the city, the staff is recommending abandoning this project at this time and evaluating alternative uses for the property. Alternatively, the council may direct staff to obtain formal estimates for the remaining cultural resource recovery activities, identify additional funding, and amend the CIP project budget to complete the project, or we could continue to negotiate with the local Indian tribe to try to figure out a retaining wall alternative that would allow us to retain the soil on-site, also requiring an amendment to the budget and a revised project design, and bring that information back to the city council for an amendment to the CIP budget. If the council decides to abandon the project and follow the staff recommendation, we're also interested in hearing any ideas for a public use of the property or evaluation of any types of scenarios that you'd like to see the property considered for, so that we can fully evaluate all available options before we come back to the council with the final report. And that completes my staff presentation. I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Councilwoman Green.
Are there any speakers on this item? No? Okay. Just so I understand the situation, thank you so much for the presentation, is we were trying to make a flood retention basin to get 42 property owners out of a flood zone who are currently in a flood zone, who currently pay flood insurance if they have an active business, and if they were going to have to build, the flood zone requires that they raise the elevation of their project so that they're not in an immediate flood zone parcel. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So initially, our whole intention was to just try to do this to help business owners, and we allocated $860,000 to make it happen?
That's correct.
Okay. And what you're saying is that it could cost in excess of, obviously, 860 million, or 860,000, but it could go up another, just unforeseen cost, is what you're saying, right?
We estimate it'll well exceed 860, probably over a million at this point.
Okay, so probably another 500,000 that we don't have anywhere in our budget that we can't pay for. So you'd like us to give you a recommendation on, number one, if we want to just abandon it and leave the owners in the flood plain, which I have spoken with some of the business owners in downtown and what the effect is on it. You know, one of them actually pays $2,200 a year for flood insurance in downtown, and they were excited about it, but they understand the financial ramifications of having the city pay for it. It's my understanding we currently own five acres over there, correct?
That's correct.
And out of that, five acres, two acres of that, they're trying to preserve for cultural Indian land?
The whole detention basin area is about 2 and 1/2 acres. We would probably, if abandoning the project, have to negotiate an area for cultural resources to remain, but that's undetermined. It definitely won't take more than half the site.
Okay. So we would be left with another possible 2 and 1/2 acres that we could do what we would like with, or how much land is it, is what I'm asking?
The pad itself, where the detention basin is, is about 2 and 1/2 acres. The creek and the trail that runs the rest of the site, which I can go back to a slide here, is the other 2 and 1/2 acres. So the area in the red is about 2 and 1/2 acres. We would have to set some of that area aside, so we may be left with an acre and a half or two acres to use.
Okay, so the acre and a half is what we would have usable. And when we were talking about it initially, I know when I spoke with the city manager about it, we always talk about, hey, we want land for parks. My concern with that area is that I've done a lot of ride-alongs with our sheriff's department, and I know that along that creek bed and along that trail, we have a really high homeless population, and if you have a park that's kind of out of sight, it might not be a great location for a park. But I do like parks, so when you're looking for ideas, check that out. The other question that I have is, what would the impact be if the developer added additional units? I know it's not a, you know, big, you know, hit with the community here, but as opposed to us paying $500,000 to, you know, go through the whole cultural burial process, if we were to sell a portion of the land, would the developer then be responsible for paying that? And then we would have an extra $860,000 that we could spend, plus whatever we sell that to the developer for? I'm just trying to figure out what's the best net positive for the city, you know what I mean?
That's correct. We would have the money left in the CIP budget. We haven't spent any city money on the project yet.
Okay. So if we sold a portion of it to the developer, and we could do like a traffic study, environmental impact, figure out all that good stuff, they would actually be required to give us money for that, and then they would have to take care of the Indian cultural preserve issue, correct?
That's one option, yes.
Okay. And if we were to do a park, we would have to pay for the Indian Cultural Reserve, plus whatever a park would be, plus the maintenance, plus the policing and all of that?
Yes.
Okay. I definitely think that abandoning it is smart, because I don't think that you just keep pouring money down a black hole, per se, and if we know it's already going to be more than what we have budgeted, we have no extra money to finish the project, it doesn't make sense to proceed. So my recommendation is that we abandon it. As far as what we do with it, I don't think that we make a decision on what we do with it tonight, would be my recommendation, but I would definitely say, hey, let's figure out what the highest and best uses for the property. If it was feasible, what's the feedback from our sheriff's department, other stakeholders and things? But I would definitely, you know, me personally, based off of the information and what we have to do numbers-wise, it makes complete sense to, if nothing else, say, yes, we want to abandon the retention basin at this point and deal with whatever comes our way. Look at what the cost would be for the Indian cultural preservation. Look what the cost would be if we were to do a park, and look what the cost would be if we were to negotiate with the developer, if they have any interest in that land, which, since it's adjacent to their project, I would anticipate they may. So that's my feedback on it, is yes, abandon it. No decisions right now, but please come back with more information on whether it'd be something the developer would be interested in, or if it would be something that our park fund might be able to make work. So that's all I got. Thank you.
Councilwoman, I think staff's looking for an action to amend our capital improvement plan and repeal approval of project number 8285.
On the action, we just want to make sure if the council is in favor of staff's recommendation to abandon the project, we hear that tonight, and then we will take care of all the details in a subsequent report. I think, I think as they go along, we might see if whether we need a vote or whether each individual...
Councilwoman Rigby.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, and thank you for that report. It's unfortunate that we're not going to be able to finish this project. It was really going to be a nice project for our community, but I understand exactly why we're having to abandon the project, and I am, of course, I agree with staff's recommendation to abandon the project at this time, and I think there are so many different things we can do with the property, and I think I would like to see us have our brainstorming session and ideas from staff and perhaps the community as well about what we might want to do with that area. The first thing I thought of was a park. We want more park space in Vista. We want more open space, but that is a very difficult space for eyes-on people and eyes-on things happening, and we had a park here once where we didn't have good eyesight on it, and a lot of nefarious behavior was happening over there, so we don't have that area anymore. So we don't want to run into a situation like that, but that doesn't mean there aren't many things that we can consider. So I would like for staff and perhaps the community to come back to us and give us some ideas about what we might do, and as has been said, we want the best, highest use of that property. To bring the, to bring the neighborhood up, you know, whatever we do there has to benefit, it has to enhance the neighborhood, and it has to enhance the community, so let's take a look. So I would agree with staff's recommendation at this point.
Councilwoman Contreras.
I would also agree with staff's recommendation to abandon the basin. Since there's going to be a new development there, I would think that there's going to be a little bit more activation. I really would like for us to see what additional uses that would be a public benefit. You know, I remember some years ago, but not too far from here, right across from Vista Community Clinic, there were a few little jumps and whatnot, and, you know, mountain biking and whatnot has gotten very popular. I know it's not a huge site, but it would be cool to, you know, throw, I just want to throw that idea in there. Maybe we do a little ring where, you know, some, some mountain biking or not necessarily like an off-road, you know, motorized vehicle or anything like that, but I think it'd be an interesting concept to see if, if we could have some kind of a track for mountain biking with jumps and whatnot as part of a potential park design. That's pretty much the, all the comments I have for this, but I think it's smart for us to abandon this project at this point.
I would agree with the staff recommendation. My understanding is that this was going to make it easier to develop some of those parcels downtown, and we've visited with the parcel owners and developers, and they've indicated that they've already planned to raise their property by the requisite number of inches, and so perhaps it's not the impediment that we once thought it was, or, you know, not as necessary to incentivize development in our Paseo Santa Fe area and downtown area. So with that, I think it makes sense for us to abandon the project, considering the increase in costs. As far as the disposition of the land itself, I too would like to hear the full range of options. This parcel is very close to Wildwood Park. What I'm thinking, and I don't know if we've already started to take a look at the fair market value land, but perhaps it's possible that we could sell this land and purchase some land somewhere else for park, or maybe there's better and higher uses for the money within the city, but maybe we want to look at where else we could acquire a piece of property that would be even more beneficial. As, as has been noted, this property would not be easy, you know, like Wildwood is visible from, from, from Vista Way. This parcel would not be visible, and it wouldn't be very easy for us to make sure it was a safe area, while activation from some other kind of use might provide a better use. So those are my thoughts. Do you have enough direction from us to move forward on this?
Absolutely. We'll come back with a, with a recommendation to take the project out of the CIP and provide some options for use of the property and have a further discussion.
Very good. Okay, that'll close this item, and we'll invite the mayor to return.
Okay, we are ready to do the next discussion item. Whoa. They're all leaving. Is a proposed general plan amendment and zone change at 2337 Vista Grande. So Director Conley will introduce that item.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Patsy Chow, our city planner and deputy director of community development, will be giving the presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Ritter, council members. Patsy Chow, deputy director of community development, city planner. Pleasure to be here this evening to present this item D3 before you, which is basically a discussion item regarding a proposed general plan amendment and a zone change at 2337 Vista Grande Drive. So the subject parcel that's shown on this slide is a 2.05 acre site, and the current general plan designation, which is within our sphere of influence, just outside a jurisdictional boundary, is identified as rural residential, RR, at one dwelling unit per acre. The pre-zoning for the site is identified as A1, which is equivalent to one acre required lot size. This is just a picture, an angle showing the subject property in the middle of the site, in the middle of the slide, and you have surrounded by single-family residences and to the northwest, an existing nursery. So the preliminary proposal for a general plan amendment and a zone change was submitted on July 25th this year to basically subdivide the existing property into two lots. The proposed use would require the general plan amendment, as mentioned before, from residential to low-density residential, that would allow for two dwelling units per acre. And that would be accompanied, have to be accompanied by a zone change from the pre-zone A1 to E1, which is our estate's residential zone, to allow the two dwelling units per acre. So on the left side is the general plan exhibit showing the change from what's identified as RR to be LD, low-density residential. As you can notice, currently in our city, to the west of the subject property and to the south of it, it's already identified as LD, low-residential, low-density residential. To the right, it's the zoning exhibit showing the existing zone, which is in the county of San Diego, is identified as A70, and pre-zoned as A1, as previously mentioned, and the proposal is for it to be changed to E1, which again, as you notice on this slide, to the west of the subject property and south is already identified as E1 within our jurisdiction. So the applicant submitted a preliminary tentative parcel map that would be required if, in fact, the proposal were to move forward, and this has not been analyzed by staff, but basically shows the subject property where there's existing single-family, the existing garage on the lot, and they would be subdividing that into two lots to create a second lot just to the west of the existing structures. There would be some dedications required along Vista Grande Drive as well. Staff thought it would be important just to remind the city council about our goals within the general plan under our land use and community identity element in terms of annexations, which basically talks about the need to ensure the annexations of property within the Vista sphere of influence occurs in a manner that protects our existing character so that it's consistent with the planned land uses for these areas. There are sub-goals within this particular goal 13, and it talks about encourage annexations of islands, pockets of incorporated land that are low-density designated, in this case, residential. Also to discourage annexations of residential land that have high-density designations, unless consistent with the land use map. To pre-zone property within this free area of influence so that the zones are consistent with our city's designated land uses. Also important to evaluate fiscal impacts of these annexations to make sure that they occur in a manner that allows the city of Vista to provide services without reducing existing service levels, and last but not least, that all infrastructure, services, sewer, local streets, utilities that would be needed to serve the development, they would actually be the responsibility of the applicant at the time of development. So the item before you tonight is basically that the general plan amendment and the zone change requests are at the discretion of the city council ultimately, with a formal recommendation that would be required by the planning commission. So the staff is bringing this item before you tonight for discussion so that comments can be provided to the prospective applicant with regard to the GPA and the zone change. Now, if a formal application is in fact submitted to the city, the project will be reviewed by staff, and there will be public hearings before the planning commission, before the city council, whence the review process is completed. And LAFCO, in this case, the local agency of formation commission, would also be part of the process because they would need to hear the annexation request at the end. So tonight, the staff is requesting the city council to provide comments to the prospective applicant as far as the general plan amendment that's, and the zone change that's being proposed for the subject site. And this concludes my presentation, and I'm available for any questions you may have. Thank you.
And I have two speakers. You want to hear the speakers first? Okay. We'll start with Vernon Campbell, and then we'll be followed by Ursula Sack. Hmm. Come on, did you want to speak?
Yeah, I'm Vernon.
Did you want to, did you want to speak on the, on the subject? You want to talk to us?
No, I...
No?
No, I just...
Okay, you're just in favor of it, and you didn't want to talk?
Mayor, this is the applicant, and just in case you have any questions for the applicant who's proposing the zone change, I think he's just here to answer questions. He wasn't prepared to make a statement.
Oh, okay, okay. Oh, okay, thank you. Anybody have any questions of him?
No.
Okay, nobody has any questions, so that's, thank you. Thank you for coming, and we'll let you know. Okay. Is Ursula here? Ursula Sack? Sorry.
Good evening. I'm Ursula Sack. I'm the secretary treasurer of La Homme Alliance for Responsible Development, also known as Guard. And we are interested in that area of Vista and the north part of Vista in terms of our quality of life and our semi-rural environment. As I read about land use decisions all around San Diego County, I've been concerned about how often general plan amendments are given out. It's kind of like Halloween candy. Everyone asks one, and everybody gets it, it seems. Now, how can a general plan have any purpose or meaning for a community if it's constantly being overridden? If this property were annexed, it would conform with the city's general plan as it is. There is clearly a benefit to one property owner to grant the amendment, but where's the benefit for the citizens of Vista? What I see here is the beginning of a process that will systematically destroy the semi-rural nature of this neighborhood. Let's consider how this would play out. When a property is being considered for development, the zoning of the neighboring property, properties is always taken into consideration, as you showed on your slide. So if this amendment goes through, then when an adjoining property comes up for consideration, it too gets the general plan amendment, and it gets higher density. And then the next one, and then the next one, and so on, piecemeal, until the whole area has far denser housing than what your general plan calls for. This isn't just a fantasy. You received a letter in favor of this project from the, a large property owner of a property just a little bit east of this one. That property is zoned one dwelling unit per acre, and it's clear that he hopes that his property will be rezoned for higher density in the future.
Your time is up. Your time is up, ma'am.
Okay. I just want to say, it makes your general plan a worthless document.
Thank you. Okay, and that is our only speaker, so Councilmember Rigby?
Madam Mayor, when you were giving your report, you talked about how this would fit in, if we, to the current planning, to the current general plan and the current zone, that it would align with our current? Is that what you had, had said?
Basically, it is currently identified in our sphere of influence as one dwelling unit per acre, so they are asking for intensification of that. So it would be two dwelling units per acre.
Dwelling units per acre. And then on the zoning, the E1 is the two dwelling units per acre.
Correct.
Right? I am the last person to ever want to approve a general plan or a zoning amendment. Anybody who's been following along the seven year, the last seven years knows that. We spent a lot of time and a lot of energy doing our general plan, and we had a lot of community input to do our general plan. So this is a difficult one, because this isn't asking us to do high-density multifamily, which is something that would absolutely not belong here, but I'm, I really am not coming at this with a no at this point. I would be open to hearing from the planning commission and the community on this, so I don't know if that's helpful at all.
The intent of our presentation, and that is provide comments to the applicant, so he's here, I'm sure he heard your comments.
Because normally, I am adamant to stick with our general plan. I don't like changing the general plan. I don't like changing the zoning, but in this area, I would, I would not be opposed to hearing more about it, but that's not a yes either.
Deputy Mayor Franklin?
My understanding, the gentleman intends to build one additional residence on the property.
He's asking for a tentative map to split the property into two lots, so he could build a single-family home and an ADU on a single-family lot.
Mm-hmm. Okay. I, you know, what we're doing at this point is expressing to the potential applicant whether or not there's a preliminary political will. I certainly would find favor generally with the concept proposed, and would want to invite the applicant to submit a formal application and go through the planning commission, environmental impact, and all of the other, traffic impact, and all the other processes that are required before we get to a general plan amendment. It is not a high-density development, it's not a large number of units, and I certainly would like to invite the applicant to become a resident of the city of Vista and a property tax payer in the city of Vista. Be happy to have him.
Councilmember Contreras?
So just to clarify, and this might be a question for the applicant, so the intention is to build an additional unit, and that is going to be an ADU? Is that, did I hear that properly?
They could split the lot and create a new single-family lot on the existing property, which would allow one single-family unit and one ADU on any single-family zoned lot in the E1 zone. You can build a primary residence and an ADU, so that's what could be done. As far as what the applicant proposes to do, I don't know that. You can bring him up here if you'd like to hear from him directly.
Actually would.
They just have a question for you, and they want to know about what you're going to build there, if you're going to build...
I'm, I'm not going to build, I just splitting it and leave it for my daughter. That's all.
Does that answer your question, councilmember?
So you're just, the, the intention is to be able to divide it into two properties?
Get a...
Can you speak into the microphone, please?
Tuck right into here. Yeah, there you go.
Yeah, I have my daughter, two daughters, and I just wanted to divide it and get the title for one, and if I pass off tomorrow, whatever, this is yours, this is yours, and that's dressing.
Versus keeping it in, currently in the county, you're able to do an ADU so that, the intention is to be able to, to split the parcel, so that way your daughters could have one parcel each, right? Instead of a combined parcel?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. That's the only question that I had.
Thank you.
Because of, I mean, this is an extensive process, I do have, I have a little bit of a concern regarding kind of like the background and history of this area, and the strawberry fields. At this moment, I am a no on, on this. Thank you.
Councilmember Green?
Mr. Conley, sir, can you pull up the general plan versus the zoning slide that you showed us here in your presentation right here? Or Patsy? Super Patsy? Hi, Patsy. All right, so just so I'm looking at this correctly, what the gentleman is asking is saying, hey, I want to be part of Vista, and if we include him in Vista, he just wants to be part of what our current zoning is, and if we change it to what the general plan is, since he would be in the city, he would just fall in line with the way that zoning currently is in Vista. So this is uniform to what our current zoning is. Am I correct in saying that?
No.
No?
Because the current zoning is county, it's one acre minimum.
Oh, I get it, but he's saying, hey, I want to be in Vista, and therefore if I'm in Vista, it's zoned like this, right?
If we bring a property into the city, we always look at what's in our general plan to see if it matches what's in the general plan. What's in the general plan is one unit per acre. So he's asking for two units per acre. He's asking for an intensification of his property above what the current plan calls for.
Okay, what is this right here where it says, low dense, in our general plan, low-density residential, two dwelling units per acre?
It's the surrounding designation that's within the city.
So our city surrounding is that, his is zoned, so he's saying, hey, change it?
The change in the, in the designation that's in our plan occurs right at his property, so everything north and east of his property...
But that's just because he's not a city property right now.
That's correct, but our policy is generally, within that area, it's all one acre minimum so that we don't promote people annexing and trying to develop within the city. We make it balance with what the county allows so that we don't have a flood of annexations so that people can get higher densities.
Are they already on our city sewer over there?
No.
So he would have to tie into city sewer in order to annex as well, right?
With the new parcel, correct.
With the new parcel, so it's a lot of money. Yeah, I mean, this is my thing, all of the properties that are in, currently in the city surrounding it appear to be within our general plan, low-density, two units per dwelling acre. I have four kids myself, and I understand wanting to split a parcel into two different parcel numbers, therefore each daughter could obtain their own home loan on the property, each daughter could build their own property, and each daughter would actually have their own slice of heaven, per se, and since it technically is a large parcel, it appears to be splitable, I would say if you want to spend all the money submitting your applications, figuring out how much it costs to tie into our sewer system, know that it is going to be an extensive cost. There will be development impact fees that you're going to pay as well. I will definitely allow you to submit your application. This is definitely something I would consider. I don't think it has a large focus impact on the... I don't think it has a large focus impact on the community, and I think that it's a reasonable project and a reasonable request. Thank you.
And I actually agree with that, and I would tell, but he has to go through LAFCO also, I think, in order to write to annex in, yeah, so he's got some work to do, but I would support that. So is that enough information? Do you need to vote?
No, thank you, mayor, that's sufficient direction, I appreciate it.
Okay. Okay, with that, we'll move on to our last discussion item, which is D4. It's project labor agreements, and Deputy Mayor Franklin and Councilmember Green asked for this item to be placed on the agenda, so ask them to introduce the item.
Madam Mayor, if we have speakers, Councilman Green, would you like to hear the speakers first? I think we'd like to hear the speakers.
All speakers first?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Yes, please.
How many? Okay, we have 15 speakers. So I'll call three at a time, I'll call one up, and I'd ask the other two to please stand over here on the side and be ready to come up, so we can move it along real quickly. So we'll start out with Nico Ferraro, followed by Eric McGill, and followed by Jared Dorsey. So if the other two, Eric and Jared, would stand over here, that would help us.
Good evening, mayors, city council members, my neighbor John. Nice to be first at something. I rise in opposition of the resolution for a number of reasons. I've been involved in PLAs on many, many occasions, and I've done a lot of research on PLAs. And what I have found out, there's most of it, it's been positive results. This is a tool to save taxpayer dollars, creates local jobs, so we can have our residents working on these school projects. We've also developed a number of programs, like Helmets to Hard Hats, and Veterans in Piping, which is right up here in Camp Pendleton, to bring our veterans into the building trades. Many, many projects, too many to mention, have been built with PLAs over the years, beginning with the Hoover Dam over 80 years ago. I've been involved in a number myself, like Ball Park Village, O'Teagah Energy Center, Palomar Energy Center, the Livingston Dam, and the Petco Park. These project-type agreements have gone through the courts. Courts have upheld the ability for taxpayers to get better bang for their buck with superior What I would like to understand when you make your comments is where you did your research and how you came up being opposed to project labor agreements. I have done, again, my research in universities, Cornell University, the Economic Policy Institute, Michigan State University, University of Rhode Island, University of Utah, have all come out with positive comments about PLA.
Your time is up, sir.
My last comment is, skilled labor is not cheap. Cheap labor is not skilled.
Thank you. Eric McGill, followed by Jared Dorsey, followed by Maria Lovett. No clapping, please.
Hi, thank you. Yes, my name's Eric McGill, I've lived in Vista area my entire life. I attended Vista Unified School District schools from kindergarten up through graduation, and I just wanted to speak also against this proposed resolution. I see there are many union workers in construction trades here, so I'm not going to speak specifically the construction.
Hello, do you talk to us up here, please?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. But I have worked union jobs before, and I've worked non-union jobs before, and the difference is night and day. Unions are essential for protecting the rights of workers, for making sure workers are paid fairly, that their interests are looked out for and taken care of on the job. And from my understanding, Vista Unified School District faculty and staff are all members of the union. And in fact, Costco, which we spoke about in an earlier item tonight, the Costco location in Vista is unionized as well. And all of these employers provide essential services to our economy, and their workers are properly taken care of because they have the voice of their union, they're able to speak for themselves, and make sure that their interests are protected. So I urge a no vote on this resolution to make sure that the workers involved are treated fairly and correctly. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Jared Dorsey, followed by Maria Lovett, followed by Daniel Carlin.
Well, thank you, Jared Dorsey, local 619 carpenters here in San Diego County, and a resident of North County. You know, the two gentlemen before me pretty much said it all when it comes to skilled workforce, productivity, what the difference between a non-union project and a union project is night and day when it comes to productivity, safety, projects being built on time, under budget. But when it comes as a union member, I can't speak for all unions, I've only been a carpenter for the last 17 years, but I know as a carpenter, my union provides a four-year apprenticeship for our apprentices, where they do go to school for one week every three months, where, in which they are earning credits at Palomar College that are transferable to continued education. This has been a great career for myself, my family, my wife, and my four kids, where we've lived with dignity to pay our bills on, we're by far not wealthy, but we pay our bills on time. We are able to send our kids to school without assistance of lunch, aid of any sort of city, county, or state assistance of any kind. I can't say the same for our counterparts. It's a very sad world out there, especially in the residential trades of the non-union piece workers. These guys are taken advantage of daily. I, myself, I work in compliance with the Quad C, Carpenters Contractors Cooperation Committee, where we help workers retrieve wages that have been sold from them, from non-union contractors. These same contractors do work on prevailing wage projects where they misclassify their workers, they pay them a lower rate as laborers, where they have them working in skilled positions...
Your time is up, sir.
...which is theft of not just of city workers, or of city, but taxpayers. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Maria Lovett, followed by Daniel Carlin, followed by Tom Lemon.
Good evening, and thank you for having me this evening. I wanted to let you know that I was in favor for the project labor agreement. My husband here is a carpenter, and I have to say, it was the best decision we've ever made. There's skilled, quality workmanship, you can't get it anywhere, and they live up to a standard that you can't find anywhere else. I have to say that, in my own perspective, I've seen some of the workers from other projects that y'all have had by the city, sorry, by the courts. I have seen personally several laborers drinking and going on to the work site. I did call the city, but nobody ever called me back. I just want to let you know that I've seen that firsthand. Please, move forward on the PLA. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Daniel Carlin, followed by Tom Lemon, followed by Dave Lowen.
Well, I'm a Vista resident, I'm a former carpenter, I retired with dignity. I went through a union-sponsored apprenticeship. I've got a diploma saying the United States, the state of California, the United States, I'm recognized as a journeyman carpenter. I'm skilled. The union trades, we all put our money in, we kick a buck or two an hour to sustain the trade. That's our apprenticeship, we keep the trades going. That's why we do this. This is our trade, we want it good, we want it solid. I've had 40 years in construction, and the jobs that did not go smoothly, all it takes is one knothed contractor, one idiot, and all of a sudden I'm going home, because they can't keep the job going, because I've got to wait for them, they have to do things in certain times. Doesn't work. Rudy Steel, oh man, they cost me a couple weeks of pay. Newer's Construction, lots and lots, most of them were non-union, that cost me money. Now, we know that Franklin, he took a, you know, you're merit-based, you're ABC, you took donations for your campaign by the ABC, or whoever it was, they're merit-based, I don't know what that means. But my trade and the other trades, we have three-to-five-year apprenticeships, and that means we are qualified. We are qualified. I don't know what merit-based, idiots teaching morons, I don't know. You know, I've had it with us all my life, I don't have to do it anymore.
Your time is up, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Tom Lemon, followed by Dave Lowen, followed by Julie Lowen, I don't see the Lowens over here. Back there? I need to have you over here. Are you Tom?
Yes, ma'am, I am.
Okay.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak here, Tom Lemon, San Diego Building and Construction Trades Council, a council of unions, 35,000 strong for the county of San Diego, speaking in opposition of your resolution. You all are entitled to have an opinion. You have a fiduciary responsibility, though, to the citizens you represent, to actually do some work, to actually understand project labor agreements. Vista Unified has done three separate community outreaches, had multiple conversations with the community about what is and is not a project labor agreement. My sense is, and I'm pretty good at this, is that you have not. My sense is that somebody actually handed you this resolution, maybe somebody from the ABC, maybe somebody from the AGC, and said, hey, this is a great idea, you guys should tell the school board they shouldn't get into a project labor agreement. Kind of entertaining, actually. It's the first time I've seen this, that a city council, a distinguished city council decides that, hey, we should tell the school board how they should spend the money. I appreciate that. What you don't know about project labor agreements, what you're not going to have a conversation about, is a guarantee that the people who actually pay that bond could actually work on that project, that the people who are coming out of your schools can actually get into apprenticeships and earn a real middle-class career. That's what project labor agreements can do. It's more than brick and mortar. You haven't had that conversation? Fiduciary irresponsible for you to take a resolution that was handed to you by a group of contractors' associations and move it forward. Thank you.
I'm Dave Lowen. Okay, you guys, no clapping, this is, you're not at a ballgame, this is a council chamber, you need to have, respect everybody, and please don't clap, okay? Dave Lowen, followed by Julie Lowen, followed by John Herrera.
Dave Lowen, I'm not a carpenter, and I'm probably not going to get anybody to clap for me, but I'm in support of the resolution. My understanding is that when the school district posted the, put the bond on the ballot, that PLA was not going to be considered as a part of the, you know, the way the bond monies would be spent. And I think we should hold them accountable. Plain and simple, I don't want to see a bait and switch. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Dave. Julie? And it's followed by John Herrera, followed by Johnny Swanson.
Hi, I've been in Vista and gone to Vista Unified School District since I entered here in the fifth grade, so all the way through Vista High. My concern is that I see the facilities around Vista, and I see the Vista Unified School District campuses, and they're dilapidated, and they're disrespectful to children. There's weeds everywhere, there are buildings that need to be renovated, there are things that need to be done for the kids in our community, and instead of doing those things, instead, we have people talking about unions, and how much we're going to pay double to union contractors, so we're going to get half the projects that the children in Vista deserve. And I don't think that's right for kids. You know me, I'm all about kids in this community, and when there's a bond that comes up, and there's not going to be a PLA, and we're going to work hard to make sure that we build facilities that are worthy of children, and then all of a sudden, instead of it being about the kids, it becomes about a bunch of middle-aged men who want to make more money, it just pisses me off. And it's not about that. It's about the kids, it's about the facilities for the kids, and any way we can get the massive, the more facility projects finished, that's what we should be doing in Vista. I'd like to point out for the union in Vista, that you're losing your children, you're losing your families to homeschool, you're losing them to charter school, you're losing them in a variety of ways, and if you keep doing this, you won't even have a union to sign up for, because the Vista Unified School District won't have any kids. So my suggestion would be, I support this very much, but my suggestion for the Vista Unified School District would be, open up competition, open up a fair and reasonable procurement process. We're not saying hire people that aren't qualified, but we're saying fair, reasonable procurement process that builds the best facilities, the most facilities, and finally respects the children in Vista. Thank you.
Thank you. John Herrera, followed by Johnny Swanson, followed by Misty Tincon.
Mayor Ritter, council members. John Herrera, I'm neutral on this particular issue. I have been the chief, one of five chief stewards for the professional administrative unit of SEIU. However, I was also one of the members of the bond committee who helped pass this bond. The language, as was pointed out by Mrs. Lowen, was indeed that this would not be a PLA project. Had we considered a PLA project at that time, we would have certainly have pushed it to the max. It was not. The reason was that we would not be able to accomplish as much facility-construction-wise for the children of this district if we did a PLA. That's the only reason we did not. I'm neutral, I'm a union guy, my wife's father was a teamster with Jimmy Hoffa, but however, the will of the voter at the post said that we would pass this without a PLA. Can we expect a committee of new Vista Unified School Board members to nullify the vote of thousands of Vista voters, or VUSD voters? I think not. This is a democracy, I'm a Vietnam-combat veteran, and I vote for that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Johnny Swanson, followed by Misty Tincon, followed by Mary Jo Poole.
Hi, I'm Johnny Swanson with the ironworkers. Majority of the high-rise in San Diego, bridges and everything that is with building your infrastructure, those are the what we do. We build your high-rises throughout San Diego, making sure that you guys have structural steel buildings that are going to hold up to seismic, you know, earthquakes, and that are going to stand through time, your bridges, the, all your guys' different infrastructure does the stuff that we do, and there's a couple of ironworkers here with me today. So listening to everybody make their, you know, little testimonies about the different stuff that happened with a project labor agreement and a school district, it'd be wonderful, because again, we can bring kids into the apprenticeship. But when it comes to what mostly people say is, oh, it's going to cost this much money and this much money, the price of rebar and the price of steel is the same on both sides. The price of your concrete and everything else, it's all the same. So what is the difference? The difference is when there is no type of agreement, and some of the guys in here have said, workers are the ones that suffer. Recently, I filed certified payroll on several projects throughout San Marcos, a couple in Vista, still waiting. Turns out, workers are getting cheated on overtime and the correct wage. Prevailing wage rate is here, so why is another contractor paying so low? You know, but under a project labor agreement, those agreements are written in stone, it's not written in stone, anything is possible, but together, the workers don't suffer. The work gets done on time. Just like the building trade said, Tom Lemon, I ask that you guys do a little bit more research before you vote on this. I oppose this. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Misty Tincon, followed by Mary Jo Poole, followed by Jim Gibson.
Good morning, Madam Mayor and City Councilmembers. My name is Misty Tincon, and I'm here representing the Coalition of Fair Employment in Construction. So the first thing that we have to do is, we have to bring fairness into the construction zones with these PLAs. One, you're cutting costs. So when you're cutting costs on the city level, you're able to put that money back in the general fund, and you can put that money back in the social programs for senior services and things like that. And the community of Vista already voted on this in 2010 with Prop A, and Vista got 77% of the vote in favor of Prop A. That's your constituency, that's who you represent. They don't want the PLA... They don't want the PLAs to come to Vista and be involved. And it was also passed by a massive margin throughout San Diego County, because I was on that team. So I just encourage you to approve this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Mary Jo Poole, followed by Jim Gibson, followed by Nancy Oshley.
Hello, everybody. Oh, I thought you were going to give me extra time there. Anyways, okay, so the median income of Vista is about $48,000. The median income of the United States is about $61,000. Guaranteed, Vista has a really high standard of living and cost of living, okay? Now, you know, the language of the PLA, it's really a shame that some of these things have to come to this point for voters to understand what the heck is happening, right? But I'm just going to say, unions are what made the middle class in this country, and what made this country strong. And I understand that the PLAs are competitive to both union and non-union. So that is misinformation that's being spread, that these are only for union people. It's about the prevailing wage and benefits. Those prevailing wages were already configured into the proposition, right? I mean, they're there, they're not going to change, they're already configured into there, and if they aren't, then there's nothing that's going to make a lot of difference other than exploitation of laborers, right? As a city council, I would think that you would want to build our economic base by increasing the numbers of good-paying jobs with benefits in this city and not work against its residents. Why do you want us to stay poor? I don't understand it, right? I think that this is an overreach of the city council, that this has no place, and if individual members of the city council or staff have a problem with this, and I can understand why you might, given the language, however, the place where you need to go is the Vista Unified School District Board, not to take this, this is a bullying thing, this is an overreach, and it's a, you know, misuse of city resources and power. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim Gibson, followed by Nancy Oshley, followed by Frank Painter.
Gentlemen, ladies, thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I want to tell you, I am a contractor, and I've worked for 30 years in the trades, and some of the stuff you've heard tonight about, well, they don't train their people. I've spent hundreds of thousands of dollars training my people, and I've trained over 200 individuals, and I ran a successful business. However, when you come to a PLA, you block me out of doing construction work, for no other reasons than I'm not unionized, which is unacceptable, completely unacceptable. Secondly, I am a local business, and I'm going to tell you right now, actually, I sold my business about a year ago, so I'm not, and I'm not going to get any money from this. I'm not competing here, okay? I don't have employees anymore. But my employees were well-trained, well-paid, they had retirement, they had dental, they had all the other benefits that you're going to get anywhere else. But when you take a local business and you tell them that they can no longer compete in a certain area, it's going to raise prices. Secondly, I was on the board for 20 years in the Vista School Board, and when we discussed this, we never discussed a PLA. And lastly, we have never built a school using a PLA. So to me, this is kind of curious, and I know the five board members that are on there right now receive pretty much 100% of their campaign dues from unions. So this is a payback to the union. It's unfair to local businesses that pay local taxes here, that your community, and my people were well-paid, some of them over $100,000, to do what they had to do, and it took years to train some of those people to do what they did. I don't treat my people that way. And the horror stories that you heard, I've seen it on both sides, horror stories. Yeah, I've seen some contractors that were not performing, I've also seen union contractors that didn't perform. So please, this is not about anything like that, it's about leaving the competition out there. When you get competition, prices lower, and you get a better product because of that. And thank you, gentlemen, for putting it on air, and I support your proposition.
Thank you. Nancy Oshley, followed by Frank Painter, followed by, it looks like Augustine Lucio.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council Members. My name is Nancy Oshley, and I've lived here in Vista for 30 years, and my children, two children, both went through V U S D. I am opposed to this resolution, mainly because, well, okay, a lot of reasons, but one of them, in the language of what V U S D is saying, is they want to do PLAs on one or more projects. They have 28 projects that are listed on their website under the bond measure that are going to happen. So they're just saying one or more that they want to attach a PLA to. I think that's very reasonable. And I also say, you know, let the school board members do what they were elected to do, and you all do what you were elected to do, which is manage the city, not the school board. Thank you. Bye.
Thank you. Frank Painter, followed by Augustine Lucio, followed by Sidney Gold, my Gold, and I couldn't read the rest, sorry. Hi, Frank.
Hi. I'm Frank Painter, I live on Catalina in Vista. I've been here for, it looks like about seven years now. I came to this meeting because I heard about this PLA resolution, which seemed to me totally ill-advised on a couple of levels. But most importantly, for me, it was an opportunity just to demonstrate whose side I am on. I side with labor. I have a withdrawal card from a couple of different industrial unions. I was lucky enough to make decent wages as an unskilled laborer for many years, and I wouldn't have made those decent wages if I hadn't been supported by a union. On Thursday, on the 12th, there's a school board meeting, and they're going to address this matter of the PLA. Now, I don't have any kind of background in terms of what's going on with bond issues and what the school board intends to do with project labor agreements, but I do know that they are the people who are charged with taking care of those resources, and I don't think that John Franklin and Joe Green have the best interests of Vista Unified School Board, even school district, in mind, when they put something in front of the city council like this. So I urge a no vote on the resolution.
Thank you. And Austin Lucio actually doesn't want to speak, but he's in opposition to that. So it goes with Sidney, maybe you can help me, Sidney Gold?
Sidney wants to speak.
Oh, he doesn't want to speak either, never mind. You don't want to speak either. Does he want to speak?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, you're going to speak. And then he'll be followed by Steve Harrington, followed by J.C. Winn.
Hello, thank you. My name is Augustine Lucio. I am a union ironworker, and I am in favor of the PLA. I also want to let you know that for the last 31 years of my career, I have done many projects here in this Vista community. My first projects that I did personally was down on Melrose, I built two bridges down there with pride, for everybody, for the children, for all the community, and for everybody to ride with pride. But anyhow, it's not that much of a difference in price when you compare prevailing wage to union wage. I hope you guys take the time, you do the math, you do the research further before you guys make a decision on this, because it's not that big of a difference. When you figure in the fact that there is a lot of good family-working ironworkers here in this community alone of Vista, I have a brother that lives here, he's a union carpenter, he's raising two boys, they're both going to Vista High School right now. I married my wife, who is a Vista resident as well, from Vista. So with that being said, I hope you consider what our proposal is, and that is to let the PLA pass. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Does Sidney want to speak? No, you don't want to speak, okay, but he's in opposition. So then Steve Harrington, followed by J.C. Winn, followed by Louisa Stafford.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Staff. I'm here in support. I want to thank you, Mayor Pro Tim Franklin, and Councilmember Joe Green for bringing this up. It's gracious, it's a very divisive issue, as you can see by the voices with, everybody can pull up experts to demonstrate and to prove their side of this. But I guess there's two things, really. You know, I was here long enough, I was part of the Prop L discussion, which was very loud and very contentious. One can debate about architectural features and whether we got our money's worth out of that proposition. But Mayor, you did what you said you were going to do, and they're all up, as you promised, and according to budget. So thank you. Vista Unified passed $240 million bond measure with language specifically included in there, which told the taxpayer, the property owners, who's going to pay for this, how they were going to do it. Sandag told us they were going to have 78 improvements. Well, all of a sudden, they're going to take that money and put it into mass transit. Great, we'll just reallocate that. It's become politically easy to change the rules after everything the dust is settled. There's been discussion it'll cost more, cost less, more efficient, better work, whatever. I'll quote the legal counsel of Vista Unified School District at their last study session, this will cost in excess of $20 million. That's their own legal counsel, which buildings are going to be cut. Thank you very much.
Thank you. J.C. Winn, followed by Louisa Stafford.
Thank you again, Mayor and City Council. I just, I didn't even know I was going to speak on this until I heard all the stuff about, I just want to let everybody know that I too have lived in Vista my whole life, and I've been a contractor since the 80s. My license starts with a five, which shows you how long it's been since I've been a contractor. And I'd just like to remind everybody that unions do, I do support unions because they help keep my wage up, even though I've never been a union member my whole life. You know, I have brothers that are in the union, but it goes hand in hand. And to think that non-union guys are any worse than union guys is not really thinking clearly. There's bad apples in every basket, if you know what I mean, okay? No matter what you look at, every basket has a bad apple in it, so. I say, keep it for all the people. Keep your unions in there, keep the regular people in there, because everybody needs to, you know, everybody needs to work. And then, and then remember, the bang is for the tax, the bang of the buck is for the taxpayer in the end, you know? Where do they get the best bang for their buck? Because they're the one paying the bill in the first place. And then finally, oh, I already said, bad apples in every basket. Thank you.
Thanks, J.C. Louisa Stafford. Louisa's our last speaker.
Good evening. My name is Louisa Stafford, and just to make it clear, I want everybody to know that I do not work for Vista Unified School District. I come under altogether different perspective than unions. I come to speak for the voice of the students. I've been involved with the students for, of all of Vista, for 10 years. I visit all the schools, I talk to people, I hear what people say. Please, vote no on PLA. It is a tremendous, tremendous loss for us. We would lose probably all of Project Five, yeah, the fifth project and the money. Now, I was on the L L Committee, there was no, there is no language in there at all that talks about PLA. The only thing that it talks about it is that we will pay prevailing wages, which the district does anyway. I was, I am on the C B O D Committee, which is the Committee for Bond Oversight, and we overlook where the money goes. So I can tell you that we have voted no unanimously on PLA. The Chamber of Commerce has voted no on PLA. What you're doing by going with a PLA is taking everything away from the kids. You're taking projects away from the kids. I don't have any kids in school. I have two grandchildren, they're pretty soon are going to be out of the system. They will never see these improvements, they will never enjoy any of this, but there is more kids to come. We cannot lose any more students to Carlsbad, the Carlsbad District, to San Marcos District. We can't. Oh, I am sorry. Please, just listen to the people. Thank you.
Thank you. That's our last speaker, so I will go to, back to Franklin and Green, which one must go first.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think I want to start by saying that the building that we're sitting in tonight was built without a PLA. It was built by, with public bonds. It was built with the workers being paid fair wages under prevailing, the state's prevailing wage law. I think it is incredibly important and a central issue here, and for everybody who's listening at home, to my neighbor who I respect greatly, I did do my own research on this, I didn't find any lofty academic papers, but I went out and I looked at the prevailing wage determinations. A carpenter who works without the PLA will be entitled to a base straight rate of $64.11, including all of the required compensation under the determination for prevailing wage. That is, at 2,080 hours, that's $133,348 a year. A drywall installer will be paid a base rate of $52.63, or $109,470. Ms. Poole was kind enough to point out one of the statistics I wanted to bring up tonight about the average income of individuals here in the city of Vista. I think, based on my latest census information that I got here, average household in Vista makes about $60,000 a year. So if you're able to make $110,000, according to state law, as a drywall installer, then you're doing substantially better than the average. I have many good friends who are both union and non-union laborers, tradesmen, very proud to be a member of the Optimist Club in Vista, and there are many, many contractors who are members of that organization, and who are laborers themselves in the trades, and I think they're all quite proud of the work they do, and they're local businesses. I don't take much stock in the idea that, you know, and I think our building that we're sitting in, our beautiful city hall, is proof that you can build a beautiful building with quality without necessarily including a PLA. This is about the will of the voters in Vista, who voted to reject PLAs in the past overwhelmingly by more than three-quarters. But more important, it's about the fairness, and Mr. Lemon asked me, who gave me this language and why I'm bringing it forward tonight. Someone else pointed out that it wasn't the business of the city council to get involved in this. Well, I can assure you that the school board members make it their business to come before the city and make their opinion known. I'm using my platform as an elected leader so that folks in Vista will have this issue on their lips. I was not going to, if it was up to me, have a PLA passed without full discussion, and I have achieved my goal, and I appreciate Councilman Green, who has been an equal partner in helping bring this forward, and who has done a fantastic job of helping to achieve some publicity for this issue. At the end of the day, accountability comes from sunlight and oversight of the voters themselves, and I hope that the voters will take the time to come and show up on Thursday night here at City Hall, next door at the Morris Vance Room, and make clear to the school board that, like Mr. Painter said, he's going to make clear whose side he's on, Mr. Painter, I'm on the side of the kids, period. If I have to choose sides, and I don't want to choose sides, but, Mr. Painter, I'm on the side of the kids, period. We have children in this community who go to school in third-world conditions, third-world conditions. I've been into the schools to do service projects through our church, and I was appalled by the conditions I found. I could not believe that children in my community go to schools that are as dilapidated and as disgusting as the ones here in Vista. And I will do everything in my power to make sure that children, impoverished children in our community, don't continue to go to school in trailers. And I appreciate, and I've had opportunity to meet with labor leaders who've visited me numerous times at my front door in my personal residence, thank you for that personal intention, and they made clear to me that they understood that children in Vista will continue to go to school in mobile trailers if we have a PLA. Children go to school in trailers in Vista. That's unacceptable. That's unacceptable, and that is why the people of Vista voted to approve a bond, to pay for decades to come, hundreds of dollars on their property tax every year, because they did not want to continue to see poor kids go to school in trailers, and I don't either. And if it's within my power to bring public light to this issue, then I'm going to make sure that little kids do not go to school in roach-infested trailers. That's not acceptable. We need facilities that are first-class. Enrollment in our Vista Unified School District has declined steadily, primarily because when parents come to visit the facilities, they see facilities that they don't want their kids going to school in. Parents don't choose to buy homes in Vista because the facilities are that much in need of repair. I am concerned about providing and keeping our promise to the voters to deliver the facilities that were promised under Prop LL, Measure LL. That's my concern here. I want to make sure that we deliver to the voters that which they were promised. How did I become aware of this issue? Why did I decide to get involved? Because teachers and administrators reached out to me, concerned, because they had been advocates for the bond measure. They were concerned that the kids that they work with every day will not receive the benefit of improvements that were promised to voters, and more important, they were promised to the kids. And they were the ones who brought this to me. Members of the bond committee, who were involved in proposing this and in securing passage for the community, they came to me, and they told me how deeply upset they were about this broken promise. And they asked me to do something, and I said I would. The ballot language that was used to induce voters in Vista to pass this said that the use of a project labor agreement is not currently envisioned. Slippery language, maybe, but it said to the voter, "We know that PLA is an issue that you know what it means. We know that you know that you're against it, and we're telling you that if you vote for this, as we so often do when we pass a new tax, we're just lied to as voters." I have a hard time voting for new taxes because so often, some public official makes a promise that they know in advance is a lie, and then they take the money that we're bound to pay for decades to come, and they flat-steel it for another purpose. What happened to doing what we said we would do? What happened to being honest? And what happened to putting the interest of little, poor kids first? What happened to that? I'm sorry, but I, you know, you brought to me concerns that somebody that's not a union laborer is going to do subpar work, but I think what Mr. Winn said is accurate. There are individuals on both sides of the equation who do fantastic work, and there are individuals on both sides of the equation who don't. But I can guarantee you that at $64.11, $64.11 an hour, the state mandated prevailing wage requirement for all individuals who work on these projects, no matter what the school board does on Thursday night, or $52.63 an hour, now just, wherever you are at, just stop and think, if you're fortunate enough to earn $52.50 an hour, how long in your life did it take you to get to the point where you made that kind of money? Because I can guarantee you, it took me a long time, you know? And I know a lot of college-educated people don't make that kind of money. I know a lot of hard-working people do good work, don't make that kind of money. But that's the rate of pay for somebody that hangs drywall, which is a tough thing to do. It's an art, and I respect the people who do it, but it's a good wage, it's a fair wage. I didn't raise this issue to make a political point about PLAs or labor or any of that, be honest with you. I raised it only because I care. I raised it because I care about the kids in our community. That's why I raised it. I received campaign contributions from labor organizations, and yes, I received $450 from the Associated Builders and Contractors because they believe that I'm in favor of free markets, and that is one of the three guiding principles that I subscribe to as a conservative. I believe in smaller government, I believe in lower taxes, and I believe in free markets. I believe that fair and open competition yields better service at a lower price, and I will always fight for free and open markets, because it is a guiding principle that I have always subscribed to and I will always subscribe to. But at the end of the day, again, this is about kids, most of whom are minority children, most of whom are severely impoverished. You know, a lot of the people in our community that have the money to do it have taken their kids to private schools, to charter schools, they moved to Carlsbad, they moved to other school districts, and there's just a lot of kids in our community that don't have any choice. And this is absolutely for them, and I don't care how many times you clear your throat or what you accuse me of, but I'm going to fight for those little kids because they deserve it. They absolutely deserve it, and you ought to be up here, and you ought to be advocating for those kids first to get what they were promised by voters, what they were promised by the bond committee, what they were promised with this vote. That's all that matters here. I'm fighting for the next generation of Vistaans to have good, quality schools to go to school in. That's what this is about. Thank you.
Councilmember Green.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Franklin. So, I heard all the comments as well. The reason this is being brought forward is because 27 of the 41 years that I've been alive have been spent intimately tied to Vista Unified School District. I have four kids in Vista Unified School District, two that have already graduated, two that are currently in Vista Unified. I'm also product of Vista Unified School District. The same trailers that I went to school in at Ranch Winnebago High School are still there today, for the record. Those were supposed to be there for five years. I graduated in 1996, my friend. That was over 20 years ago, and those same trailers are there with no upgrades. I was on the bond committee, I was on the facilities improvement committee, I've been the president of the PTA at Beaumont Elementary, president of the PTA at Vista High School, president of the PTA at Ranch Minerva Middle School, vice chair of the PTA at Vista Magnet Middle School. I have no donations from any builders, my friend. This is all about the kids. I had parents from my PTAs come to me and say, "We're losing projects that were promised to us." I personally was asked by the school district to endorse this bond. My mayor was asked by the school district to endorse this bond. When you check the paperwork, you'll see we endorsed it on the premise that there was to be no project labor agreement. For that to be changed at this point in time and jeopardize the projects that are to be done for our kids, and mind you, my youngest son is 12 right now, my oldest daughter is a senior in high school, they're probably not going to be benefiting from all of these projects when all is said and done. But it's about the future of Vista, and it's about maybe needing another bond in the future. And if we need a bond in the future and we don't do what we say we're going to do now, passing another bond in the future, which is greatly needed for these facilities, is going to be extremely hard. I have visited all these facilities. Like I say, I've been on three different facilities improvement committees through Vista Unified School District. I've pitched my case to Donna Caperton, Devin Vadichka, the previous superintendent that was out there, and the current superintendent as well. I am super excited that the bond passed, but I'm even more excited about the projects that were supposed to be done. This PLA jeopardizes that, and it's nothing more than a political move by the Board of Trustees that was elected with union money, and it is completely unfair to the citizens of Vista, in my opinion. Now, some of you said, "The price of material is the same as both, on both sides." That's fantastic. All I'm asking for is what was promised, a competitive bid process. If you can come in at the same bid as a non-union company with the prevailing wages, on the bond committee, we assured state prevailing wages are being paid, so nobody's going to be there and not get paid what prevailing wage is. We've ensured all your workers are going to get paid what they're expecting to get paid, so you should be able to bid this job with other contractors and come in just fine without a PLA. I think the competitive bid process is the best way to do it. It's the way we did in the city of Vista. We had union workers and non-union workers on this project. I want to say the steel workers might have framed some of the steel here, and we had some other contractors do some of the other work, but we can all work together. It's about getting the most for our money. I even had a constituent tell me, "Hey, look, with your own money, you can shop around all you want, but with government money, we got to protect the suppressed worker." I don't buy that. I feel like what we need to do as elected officials is get the biggest bang for our buck for our taxpayers. I personally agreed to pay $138 per year on my taxes for the next 30 years for this bond. So did all of my neighbors. I had people who stood on tutus and shook signs and did all that they could to pass. Presidents of PTAs, moms and dads of kids who said, "Hey, we want this done." The fact that the only policing that we have on this bond is the Citizens Oversight Committee in the bond that said, "Look, just so you know, we got a Citizens Oversight Committee. We're going to make sure all the money's spent how it's supposed to be spent." Well, the Citizens Oversight Committee said, "Don't do this. This isn't how the money's supposed to be spent." Why aren't we listening to the policing that we put in place on this very bond measure? It makes absolutely no sense to me. I will be at the board meeting on Thursday. I will be speaking as a parent, a parent of four kids, graduate of Vista Unified Schools. I've never seen any of you in my life, with the exception of my buddy right there who lives on Kaia Sinaloa, right around the corner in my district. What's up, man? I got a lot of friends in the union. My best friend is a union drywall worker, all right? But I'll tell you what, if he's got kids in this district and he sees what we're going to lose, he's not going to be for this either. The truth is, there's been no information. The school district's agenda that came out had no staff report on it. It's my understanding the staff report wasn't favorable. Nobody wants to lose their job. So, we'll see how it goes tomorrow. I'm excited to, on Thursday, I'm excited for them to tell us what they're going to do. One of my favorite sayings is, "It's not magic, it's math." And if you can prove to me that you're going to do every project that you guaranteed the voters within budget and it's not going to change, show me the numbers. As of now, those numbers haven't been shown. The numbers that have been shown were from the attorney for Vista Unified that said, "We've looked at the numbers and we're going to lose over $20 million." The other numbers were from the Citizens Oversight Committee, who one of the members that I spoke with said it was over $40 million, which I think is extremely excessive, but the reality is, $1 million lost of funds that are supposed to go to my kids and your kids is too many dollars, in my opinion. Whether it's $20 million or whether it's $40 million, it's too much. We need to get the projects done that need to be done. Declining enrollment is a real thing in Vista Unified. Do all of you union workers know that? Over 600 students per year over the last four years in Vista Unified have been lost. When you talk about TIG money, which is over $9,500 per student, think about that. 2,400 students, $9,500 per student, we're losing money. We're in a budget crisis in Vista. Check the Union Tribune. And the way we're going to solve it is paying workers on our projects more money and not do as much for the kids? For me, it makes absolutely no sense, and I have no clue how they're going to explain this to the voters and explain this to parents who voted for this, that this is what's best for their kids. So, the reason this was brought forward, it's something I'm obviously passionate about. I've spent 14 years volunteering in this school district as a parent, this is my 30th year on the council, and if your school Board of Trustees isn't going to stand up for kids, which that is their job to fight for kids, I'll stand up for the kids, and my peers will stand up for the kids. And exactly what I wanted to accomplish, whether you're pro this or against this, I have accomplished. My social media posts have reached over 6,000 people, which means 6,000 people that didn't know about this before hopefully know about this. And whether this passes or not with the school board, they're going to know. The Citizens Oversight Committee opposes it, the Vista Chamber of Commerce opposes it, and your city elected officials oppose this. It's not what's best for our kids, and that's where I stand on this item. Thank you.
Councilmember Contreras.
I just want to... 2020's coming, everybody. Can you tell? There's an election coming. You know, I was really excited about this council meeting when I looked at the first agenda that went through. I was like, "Yes, this is going to be a good meeting." And then I see this email fly through my inbox, and I click on it, and I go, "What is this?" I have heard, and everybody has heard, over and over, the school board, VUSD. We are not the school board, we are not VUSD. This is Vista City Council. I was elected to deal with common ground issues that are within the purview of the city council, not to use this platform as a soapbox for highly partisan issues. I already knew this was going to end up being a conversation between pro-union, anti-union, free market, you know, all that. So, I wasn't really excited at all for D4 to come up. I think that it is, you know, I respect my colleagues, but I'm very disappointed that this was brought forth on this agenda. It just does not belong here. And I do, you know, I was actually, Deputy Mayor Franklin, I was going to use this building as an example as well, because we just voted at the last council meeting to move forward with some fixes to this building. This building was completed in 2010, am I correct? This is 2019, and we've had a leak over the IT section that is just about to get fixed. Maybe if we would have had a PLA, I don't know, maybe that would have not been an issue. So, I guess there's, you know, there's two sides to a coin, right? So, that's my side to this building. It is a beautiful building, though. I do love it. Now, you know, we talk so much about kids, kids, kids. Yes, we all love the kids, we all support it. You know, your social media posts, Councilmember Green, did get a lot of buzz, as it did when you put up a social media post for the Chin's Corner. And so many people, you know, said, "We don't want this." And there wasn't a problem accepting an application to put a gas station right across from the school here. So, it is highly partisan, and this is the second highly partisan item that has been brought to the council in just a few months. The first one was our opposition letter to Sandag. This is the second one. Just like that opposition letter did nothing, this resolution, if we pass it, does nothing. VUSD has never done a resolution against us. It just does not make sense to have this discussion. I'm not going to get into an ideological discussion. I don't want to waste Vista's time with an ideological discussion. We have so many things that we need to get fixed, and, you know, some amazing resumes were put forward today. I think that if we really want to dictate what happens at Vista Unified School District, that we resign from this position and we run for school board, and we get elected for school board, and we do the phenomenal job of being a school board member. But I did not get elected to be a school board member. I did not get elected to discuss items that have no tie to the city of Vista under the purview of the council, okay? Whether we move forward with this item or not tonight, it doesn't make a difference. And the reason that it was thrown onto the agenda is so that we could have this discussion before VUSD has their meeting on Thursday. I just, I find it really irresponsible of this council. If there's a majority that moves forward today to accept this resolution, because it does not belong here, we should not be having this discussion. This meeting should have ended at the last item. I'm very disappointed to have to be sitting here right now discussing something that has nothing to do with what this body is supposed to be doing. And maybe this is a question for staff. My question is, if there is a majority that moves forward with this hyper-partisan resolution, what are the ramifications? What is going to change on the 12th, when Vista Unified School District has their meeting? I don't know if perhaps our city attorney can inform me if we do have some kind of weight, because that would be news to me, so I'm just, I want to get everything clarified.
We have no legal weight. I would assume that the resolution would be handed to the school board. Obviously, some members of the council, or at least one member of the council, intends to go and speak, and other than that, it's simply the old bully pulpit.
Thank you. That's pretty much what I thought, but I just, it's always good to clarify things, right, for the public. Now, the, I'm going to move on to the language of the resolution itself, which I think is disheartening. So, I particularly have an issue with E., and I'm going to read it. "A mandate from the Vista Unified School District for businesses to enter into a project labor agreement as a condition of working on construction contracts is anticipated to reduce bid competition and increase costs of improving educational facilities, and as a result, will compromise the ability of the district to pursue its constitutional duty for students." the ability of the district to pursue its constitutional duty for students." I feel like what I'm missing in this discussion is an actual report that will, one, demonstrate that this will reduce bid competition, demonstrate that it will increase costs of improving educational facilities. And I don't know how we demonstrate the last part. It seems like a very subjective... I mean, "As a result, will compromise the ability of the district to pursue its constitutional duty for students." It's very subjective. I don't know how we even prove that. I'm here to discuss facts. I'm here to discuss issues that are within the legal purview of this council. I'm not here to create my own soapbox. Even if a majority of the residents in Vista are against PLAs, we are not voting on that here in the city of Vista. That is, it's a separate, these are two different bodies. And you know what? I went to one of, I went to Vista High School, so I guess I went to one of these really disgusting schools. And I'm here in front of you today. So, yes, I would love, because just like Councilmember Green said when he went, you know, those trailers are still there. It's the same thing at Vista High School. Those trailers are still there and it is a problem. It is a problem. But it is not our duty as council members to pontificate and to get hysterical up here It's not our duty to do that when it's not within the legal purview of this body. You can, we can sit up here and we could waste the public's time and we can continue to discuss hyper-partisan politics, but that's not gonna make my community better. So hopefully, you know, when the school board has their meeting on Thursday, everybody that's concerned, everybody that's pro or anti, whatever you wanna call it, please take all your comments over there because that's where it matters. It doesn't matter what we say here today. I am highly against this resolution because it is outside the legal purview of this council. And we should not be wasting time discussing items like this that are just going to divide our community, when instead, we could be focusing on all the common ground issues that we have that need attention. So, like I said, I respect my colleagues, but I am very disappointed to see this on the agenda today.
Councilmember Rigby.
Mike, Mike, thank you, thank you very much. Thank you to everybody who came out here tonight to speak to us on this issue and to share your insights and your concerns and your experiences. Everybody's made some good points. Union crews do a great job. Union crews don't do a great job. Independents do a great job and some independents don't do a great job. Lots of apples in that basket, as Mr. Win said. I love kids. I wanna do right by kids. I have kids. My kids are grown up now. What we call grown and flown. I wanna do what's right for the children of our community. And as a councilwoman, I am afforded the opportunity to go to the schools and see, go visit. I read to the kids. I love when they let me read to them. And I love all the little hugs I get at my kneecaps as I'm leaving. But I see what's going on at the schools and how they do need work. I, I'm not a school board member. The school board is voted on and elected during the elections every two years. And at the same time as the council members are elected, the school board does not answer to the city council. The city council does not have oversight over the school board. The school board does not have oversight of the city council. We get people who come to us frequently, call me on the phone, email me, come here to speak during public comment, to complain about the school board. And we remind them, "We are not the school board." You voted for the school board members at the same time you voted for your council members on the same elections, but just different people in a different body, in a different location. And we remind them of that. We give them their phone number of the school district. We tell them when those school board meetings are and where those school board meetings are. I don't think that this is something that we should be talking about as a city council because I think it sets a precedent for one body to insert oversight onto another elected body in the city. Make no mistake, I am adamantly opposed to PLAs. I will never be in favor of a PLA and I will never support one. But as a city council member, it is not within my purview to tell the school board what they should and should not be doing. I remember when this came up, when this was going to be on the ballot and the school board, everybody in the community talked about PLAs. It's a big conversation for any type of projects going on in the community. And the school board said, in their words, "No PLA." That's what they said, "No PLA." We've heard from people on the committee, "Was never talked about. We were not gonna do it." But when the ballot language came out that said, "Use of project-labor agreement is not currently envisioned," really, who didn't see this coming? I mean, that was, that was there out, right there, just using that language. Tell us what you want us to hear and then write in the ballot what you really intend to do. That's old school. Everybody knows that this was coming. But we're not the people to deal with that. The school board is. And I think as five members of the community who may or may not have an issue with any decision of the school board, as a constituent of theirs, I'm a city council member, but I'm a resident of Vista. I'm a constituent of the school board. I vote in the school board elections. It's incumbent upon me as a community member to go to the school board and address the school board if I disagree with what they're doing. And in this case, if they do a PLA, I absolutely disagree with it. But as a city council member, I do not wanna set a precedent of chastising another elected body, a body of people who were elected by the people of this city. It's not my job to chastise them, shame them, or tell them they're doing something wrong. That's your job. As a community, as a citizen of Vista, that's your job to do. Go to the school board and address the school board with your grievances. So as much as I am adamantly opposed to PLAs, and I might, well, I can't, I have another engagement, but I will send a letter personally to the school board and let them know how opposed I am to this. I cannot in good conscience use the city council as a stick over the school board because I don't think that this is within our purview. I appreciate the conversation. I appreciate that the community needs to be made aware of this. And if that was your goal to do, you've achieved your goal. But I will not be in favor of this ordinance because I think it sets a bad precedent and a dangerous precedent of pitting people against each other on different elected bodies. And I'm just not in favor of doing that. So I encourage everybody to call, write, and show up at your school board meeting and let your school board know how you feel about PLAs. Thank you.
Okay. And I'll just jump in here and I, because I know we have a couple more that you wanna speak again, but I would just, I know that, I agree with you that I'm not sure that this is a place that should come, but I don't have, we've had school board members come here to tell, you know, tell us not what to do, but they're giving us recommendations of what they think. So I don't have a problem, you know, letting them know what I think. My name was on the bond, actually. It was on the, you know, when it went there. The San Diego Taxpayers Association endorsed the bond because they knew their wording said, you know, that it would not, they're not envisioning a PLA. The Taxpayers Association would not have endorsed that had they, had they known that. I don't, I don't agree with PLAs. I don't support them. I, there's a lot been said about that that I agree with. But it is a Vista Unified School District issue, but I don't have a problem letting them know how we feel about it as a council. I mean, one of our goals, you know, kids are a part of our city and they're, they're a concern. I don't think that, you know, just the school district is concerned with kids. We're all concerned with kids. We had a bunch of them here tonight, you know, listening to our council meeting. And one of our goals is to decrease, is to decrease blight and improve the image of our city, which the, which is gonna happen with that. But with, if they, if a PLA goes through, we aren't, that goes against that, that, one of our goals, actually. So the thing that's really most important to me is accountability and keeping your word. And when we, when our city, when we built this building, when we passed Pop L, that tax, we told them exactly what people, what we're gonna do with it. And we've done exactly, we lockbox it and we did exactly that with it. The leak in the building, this, what, this, actually, the steelworkers did this building and they had their sign out in front throughout the steelworkers' union that they, and we had union people that worked on this building. So when you talk about the leak, it was union-built, actually. So we have good and bad. And doesn't mean it's a bad thing or they did a bad job at it, it's just a thing that happened. So anyway, so I'm, I'm going to, I'm gonna support this. And so I will turn this back to Councilmember Green because enough has been said, I don't need to get on my high horse and go on and on.
Actually, I'm sorry, it was...
I would say that next time, if they do do this, that next time they try and put a bond through, that people won't believe, they won't believe them. Gotta keep your word. Oh, it's, well, Green was first, but okay, Franklin, Deputy Mayor.
Well, I didn't come prepared tonight to have a debate about the rightfulness of the place of this conversation, but a little bit of internet research yields from the California Legal Cities, you know, based, some basic language, talking about how resolutions are used to express the opinion of the legislative body. That's all this is. This is a statement of our opinion. We were elected to be the voice of the people in this community and to speak out on those things which were important to the people we represent. Whether it's a national issue, a state issue, a water issue, or a school issue, I think it's vital. And, you know, quite frankly, I think it's vital for the school board to come here, as they do, and speak on the issues before the council. They have a voice. They were elected. They speak to voters. I wanna hear what they have to say. And I appreciate always that they bring public attention. I am so proud of the work that I do on this council. And with very few exceptions, I am so proud of everything that I've ever had to say up here to represent the people that elected me. And I hope every one of them has a chance to hear all the things I have to say. And so anything that we do to bring more public scrutiny and more oversight, we're doing our jobs. Our jobs are to make the people aware of the issues that impact their lives and to bring that public scrutiny. And as was said, if we've done that here tonight, then we've done our job. I believe that is absolutely and inherently our purpose, to speak and be the voice of our community. I would urge reconsideration. I did not hear a great deal of opposition to the merit of the issue, only to the placement of it. In fact, I seem to hear some agreement on the issue of the facilities. So if that's gonna be the reason to oppose it, I would respectfully disagree. Partisan or not, it's our job to speak up when it matters. And I think this matters. This is gonna matter for decades to come to kids in our community. So with that, I make a motion that we adopt this resolution and we send a message to the school board and to the entire community that we hope that they will keep their promise to the voters, but more important, keep their promise to the children of Vista. And would also add that we encourage everybody listening, no matter what side of the issue you're on, show up here at the Morris Vance Community Room, right here at City Hall, on Thursday night and make your voice heard. Come and tell the school board what you think. Thank you.
Councilmember Green.
Yeah, I just wanted to say again that we're not here to pit elected bodies against each other. It's just a, you know, clear item of, it's our job to represent the people. When the people were asked about PLAs in 2010, 77% of them opposed it. It was said it wasn't gonna be part of the bond and the current school board isn't honoring the will of the voters. Those are voters in which I represent. So like Deputy Mayor Franklin said, this is an opinion that we have. It's obviously not shared by the majority of the council or, you know, by some members of the council. I'm hoping that it is shared by the majority. But again, it is the job of the constituents to get out there to the board, to the board of trustees, and express their distaste with the PLA and make sure that what was promised is accomplished for the kids. So with that, I do second Deputy Mayor's motion.
Councilmember Contreras.
A little bit more disappointed than I was when I first started. You know, I would just say to Vistans, I agree with Councilmember Rigby that this does set, set a very dangerous precedent. So keep your eyes on this council because we might be, you know, overstepping and policing in some other areas. So again, you know, hold all your elected officials accountable. And I am very, very against this resolution.
Okay, so I would say, then we have to vote. So we'll do by hands again. So let's see, so everyone in favor, raise your hands. Those not in favor, raise your hands. So it's a three to two vote. That passes three to two. Okay, with that, we're gonna go to our oral communications. Do we have oral communications? We have one person here speaking for oral, oh, two here speaking for oral communications. First is Peggy Walker, followed by Kathleen Lippett. You have three minutes, Peggy.
Two minutes.
Oh, I mean, two minutes. Sorry, I have, you have two minutes.
Thank you. Good evening. I'd like to say that I admire your stamina and your dedication. I'm here tonight as a mother, grandmother, and public health educator. I work for a nonprofit agency advocating for public health, safety, and quality of life policies locally and with a national organization, SAM, Smart Approaches to Marijuana, national organization headquartered in Washington, DC, that works closely with the Centers for Disease Control. I came here because in addition to the 2018 ballot initiative that requires 11 pot shops, I heard you're considering additional commercial marijuana operations that would include the manufacture of vaping products. These are popular but deadly items sold in marijuana storefronts. In light of this, I'd like to share a grave concern that we in the public health community have regarding CDC warnings of a severe, unexplained lung disease linked to vaping marijuana oils. And that's what your handout is about. Last Friday, the CDC said stop vaping because the number of unexplained severe respiratory diseases and illnesses linked to vaping jumped to more than 450 cases requiring hospitalization and are linked to at least six deaths. The Surgeon General calls teen vaping an epidemic. The city of Minneapolis and the state of Michigan have declared vaping a public health emergency and have banned vaping. LA County Health officials have called for a vaping moratorium. Thirty-six million kids vape and over one quarter are addicted. So alarming is the epidemic the Bloomberg philanthropies has pledged $160 million to end teen vaping. I'm here because of this epidemic to ask you to consider in the future...
I'm sorry, your time is up.
...a ban on all vaping products. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Kathleen Lippett. As a public health practitioner and advocate of sound public policy, I provide facts, evidence, research-based data, and, but not anecdotal or testimonial evidence or my opinion. What the public thinks they know about today's marijuana is based on what the industry told them. My goal is to provide information that will help the public make informed decisions. Communities are not well-served by those who choose to ignore history, science, research-based evidence, data, authentic community voices, or the warnings from... evidence, data, authentic community voices, or the warnings from the U.S. Surgeon General or the CDC. Only a marijuana industry advocate would assert that increasing the access, use, sale, manufacturing, and delivering of more drugs is the answer and not the problem. Marijuana and vaping are dangerous, especially to developing adolescent brain and to women who are pregnant or nursing. These are the same products that would be produced from marijuana manufacturing and sold out of outlets. Councilmember Contreras asserted that Measure Z was the result of the city's failure to address marijuana last session, but she failed to mention that at least five out-of-town and out-of-state marijuana businesses spent $450,000 to get the measure passed, and now marijuana businesses will have the opportunity to target their favorite audiences: youth, communities of low income, and communities of color. These are the communities where marijuana businesses historically locate. Last, it was the sale, trafficking, use, and abuse of drugs which devastated communities, not the efforts to prevent drug abuse. Per the Office of National Drug Control Policy, of all the inmates in state prisons, 0.3% were arrested for offenses involving only marijuana possession, and many of those were plea downs. Marijuana-friendly policies will not benefit your community members, only the people who sell those drugs. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, and thank you for sticking around and giving that information to us, both of you. Okay, with that, we're going to move on here to our remarks, and I have, I'll do my comments here first and then I'll move on down. This Friday, September 13th, from 6:30 to 9:30 in the morning, Vista firefighters will be at the intersection of Vista Village and Santa Fe, filling the boots on behalf of the Muscular Dystrophy Association. So if you're passing through that intersection on Friday morning, we encourage you to support their efforts to raise money for muscular dystrophy research. So get your money out, it's dollars and your change, and put it in their boots. Join the City of Vista and San Diego County's Coastal Cleanup on Saturday, September 21st, by picking up trash along the Buena Vista Creek, Buena Creek. Picking up litter prevents it from entering our waterways, and our registration is online at cleanupday.org, so you can sign up there to help out, to pick up the coastal cleanups on Saturday, the 21st of September. The city will be honored with a Gold Tier Award from Sand Egg's iCommute Diamond Award Program on September 26th. The program recognizes employers, including the City of Vista, for their comprehensive employee commuter options programs. And as mentioned during the presentation earlier tonight, jobs for both English and Spanish-speaking individuals are available in San Diego County for the 2020 Census, and they're, and they're well-paid, actually, so you can apply online at 2020census.gov. So with that, I will move on to Councilmember Rigby.
I have no comments tonight.
No comments. Deputy Mayor.
I don't have any more comments.
Everybody's out.
We talked out.
Councilmember Green.
I just want to thank everybody for showing up, the final six for showing up. Thank you, guys, for hanging in there. Our sheriff's deputies who keep us safe back there. Thank you, gentlemen, for your time. I also just want to say that I appreciate all the council members that I work with. I'm never disappointed in them. I know that they all have their own opinions and that they love this community, and they work super hard for this community, and although we do disagree on things, we can disagree civilly, and we can respect each other and appreciate each other and everything they do. So, great job today, council members, great dialogue, and I know we're all working hard for our citizens. Thanks again to the best staff in North County. What up?
Okay, Councilmember Contreras.
Final countdown. It's over, you guys. We made it to the end. I think, I don't know, I think the word disappointed is kind of, it seems very civil to me, but in any case, just want to remind people that every Wednesday, I said it before, but every Wednesday from 8:30 a.m. to 10-ish, we're going to be picking up trash around Luz Duran, and I also want to throw a plug in for my next town hall, which will be December 4th. Currently working on getting a panel together. We're going to be discussing youth and young adult homelessness. The panel is going to be very dynamic. Again, that's going to be December 4th at the Linda Rhodes Center. Doors open at 6:00 p.m. The meeting starts at 6:30. The discussion will start around 7:00. It'll last for an hour. I invite everybody to come. It's going to be great, and it's a topic that, you know, hits home here in Vista. We have, regardless of the methodology used, we do have a problem with youth homelessness. So please come, again, December 4th at the Linda Rhodes Center. It starts at 6:30, and just come to listen. We're just going to be listening to individuals with lived experience and individuals who work with this specific population, demographic of the overall homeless and housing insecure population. And I want to thank, you know, my colleagues. I think it's okay for us to be disappointed with one another. We're not over here calling each other names or anything, but we always do have a very robust discussion, and I think that's very important. And at the end of the day, no one forces you to vote, so, you know, however you end up voting is your choice. It's a very personal decision, and I know that it's very personal to all of us up here when we come, and we have to vote before the public and give our reasons why. So, thank you to all my colleagues, and I hope to see you all again at the next council meeting. Don't forget to bring a friend. They're really fun. Thank you so much. Have a good night.
Deputy Mayor.
You know, if something came to me, I just, I wanted to really second what Councilmember Green had to say. Those of you who hung on, staff, thank you. And, but, well, I was really moved to say that to all my fellow colleagues on the council, if you speak what is in your heart and you fight for what you believe is righteous, then I will never be disappointed in you.
Okay. With that, City Manager Patrick Johnson.
A couple comments, thank you. The city is holding...
Wait, we're not done yet.
That's okay.
Is she leaving?
No.
We aren't done yet.
They're hugging it out. All right. The city is holding two public meetings on September 16th and September 26th to gather public input on what type of projects that the city would like, city, the community would like to see the city invest in in lower-income areas. So such projects could include sidewalk improvements, public parks, homeless prevention services, or youth services. The meetings will take place at the Vista Civic Center at 6:00 p.m. in the community room, and an online survey is also available to provide input from the public at cityofvista.com. A couple other smaller items. The library will be closed September 23rd through the 25th. The library of the county is replacing the air conditioner units in the library, so they'll be closed while there's no air conditioning. Victor Victoria begins tomorrow night. This is our last summer musical at the Moonlight. It's been a very successful season, one of the most successful in history, and so we're very pleased about that, but if you haven't been, or you haven't got your tickets, there's still tickets available for that show. And at this point, there is no planned city council meeting for October 8th. Obviously, we'll have our next meeting in September, but October 8th, we'll likely have a canceled council meeting and then resume on October 22nd. So, thank you.
Okay, how about our city attorney, Darryl Piper?
I have nothing further to add this evening.
Nothing to say. Okay, how about our city clerk, Kathy Valdez?
I spoke once, that was enough.
Kathy Valdez. Nothing? Okay. Okay, and then I have one, I have one last thing here. So we're going to adjourn tonight's meeting to honor the memory of two longtime Vista residents who recently passed away, and both of them made considerable contributions to the community and the region. Roberto Rivas, Robert Rivas, is best known as the founder of the Encuentros Leadership Group that helps Latino boys and young men succeed in high school and college. He was that great guy. George Chamberlain, another great guy, was a familiar face to many, having reported on financial and business news for NBC 7 San Diego, was Money in the Morning for more than 30 years, as well as hosting a personal finance show on KOGO 600 AM. Maybe that was Money in the Morning. But both men have left a legacy that will continue to inspire and impact others, and these, but were both great guys in Vista that we lost, great men. So with that, we will adjourn tonight's meeting in their honor, and we are now adjourned. Thanks to staff back there for sticking around, and all six, our six people in the audience.